We will go ahead and get started. Thank you for attending the April 1st, 2025 Hutchinson City Council Meeting. Mary, please call and roll.
Richardson.
Here.
Garza.
Here.
Fast.
Here.
Magers.
Here.
Goss.
Here.
Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have John Wolfe from Temple Baptist Church to lead us in prayer.
Heavenly Father.
Oh, sir, I'm sorry. Could you go to the podium, please? Thank you. No one will hear you at home if you don't.
That wouldn't bother me.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you tonight. We thank you for your presence. We thank you for your guidance. I thank you for these men and women who are more than willing to serve others, Father, and to lead this community forward. Father, I pray that you give them wisdom and insight and discernment as they face the things they need to look at tonight, the decisions that need to be made, the actions that need to be taken. But more than that, Father, I ask for your blessings on this community of Hutchinson. I pray that we will be known as a city where that prospers on every front and that where your citizens thrive. Lord, we ask this, believing in the name of our Savior and coming Lord, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Item number four, Proclamations. A is Week of the Young Child, B Child Abuse Prevention Month, and C Crime Victims Rights Week.
This is the Week of the Young Child proclamation. Whereas the Early Childhood Council and other local organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child, April 13 through 19, 2025. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, which are crucial to the growth and development of young children and to building better futures for everyone in Hutchinson, Kansas. And whereas all young children and their families across the country and in Hutchinson, Kansas deserve access to high-quality early education and care. And whereas in recognizing and supporting the people, programs, and policies that are committed to high-quality early education, I'm sorry, early childhood education as the right choice for kids, now therefore I, Stacy Goss, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April 13 through 19, 2025, as the Week of the Young Child and urge all citizens to recognize and support the needs of the young children in our community. Do you want to say something now?
I can just.
Okay. And then we'll take a picture. This is the proclamation for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas our children are our most valuable resources and will shape the future of Reno County, Kansas. And whereas childhood trauma, including abuse and neglect, is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare professionals, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and families. And whereas communities must take every effort to promote programs and activities that build strong children and families. And whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community in partnership to build awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, and nurturing environment. And whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families, now therefore I, Stacy Goss, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2025, as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you.
We'll do a picture and then.
So my name is Eva Patterson, and I work for the Kansas Children's Service League. And this is, I believe, my third year getting to come for April and do the proclamation for child abuse prevention. I work in a program called Healthy Families Kansas, and that is locally here in Reno County. Our goal is to promote and protect the well-being of children. So the Kansas Children's Service League has multiple resources to do that. And one of them is called 1-100 Children, which is a great resource for anybody. And we are the Kansas Chapter for Child Abuse Prevention. So the month of April, we will acknowledge doing multiple, multiple things throughout the community. So Friday this week is National Wear Blue Day. So if you are, would like to bring awareness to child abuse prevention, wear blue. That's one of our exciting things. And then we also work in conjunction with the other early childhood programs here in Hutchinson. So that is the Week of the Young Child. And for that week, there is multiple things going on throughout the whole town. The library, the Cosmosphere, Dylan Nature Center, the zoo, there's all kinds of fun things for anybody in the community with little children. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Whereas crime affects individuals, families, and communities in profound and varied ways, often leaving lasting physical, emotional, and social challenges. Whereas the concept of kinship underscores the connections that build bridges to support services and shared strength among survivors, advocates, and communities. Whereas kinship is the foundation of victim advocacy, inspiring trauma-informed care that meets survivors where they are. Whereas through kinship, we build peer networks and community alliances that empower survivors, foster resilience, and offer pathways to healing. Whereas kinship reminds us of the strength that comes from connection, the importance of listening to every voice, and the power we have to create lasting change when we work together. Whereas Reno County District Attorney's Office reaffirms our dedication to building connections, standing in kinship with survivors, and creating a future where healing and hope are within reach for everyone. Now therefore I, Stacy Goss, Mayor of Hutchinson, Kansas, I do hereby proclaim the week of April 6 through 12, 2025, as City of Hutchinson Crime Victims Rights Week. And reaffirm this City of Hutchinson's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year, and expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace.
That's it. Thank you. Would you like to say something?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
So you can sit down.
Good evening. My name is Tom Stanton. I'm the Reno County District Attorney. I appreciate the council declaring next week to be our Victims Rights Commemoration Week. We work with victims of all types. I don't know what comes to mind when you think of victims, but any victim of crime deserves to be heard by our office and by law enforcement and by the agencies that support victims. Whether it be a businessman, victim of theft or bad checks, or whether you be victims of surviving, surviving victims of homicide, and anything in between, you deserve to be heard. And that's what we try to do in our office. We spend a large amount of our time sitting down with victims, talking with victims. And we appreciate the support that they get within the community. Sometimes our victims get judged, but most of the time, they get support. Our main activity for next week will be next Thursday evening at 6:30 in the South Hutch Community Center. We, every year, we come together. We bring victims of crime together where they can support their loved ones and be able to get some relief from the trauma that they have experienced through the actions of others. So I would invite all of you to come and participate and support the victims of crime here in Reno County. Thank you for the opportunity. Take care.
Thank you.
Item number five, petitions, remonstrances, and oral communications from the audience.
If there's anyone here who would like to speak in public comment, please stand and approach the podium. Please limit your remarks to five minutes and to items not on the agenda. Audience members may address items on the agenda when the item is discussed by the City
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm Greg Wamsley. I'm the director at the Hutchinson Public Library. Longtime Hutchinsonian. I grew up here, and I'm very proud of our library and what we have going on. And so I thought I would come down and share our library impact statement. This brochure we produce every year gives you some information about what the library has done in the past year. I also included and would like to invite you all to attend a program on April the 10th. We will have the Library of Congress, which is essentially America's library, here in Hutchinson. They'll be talking about resources that you can access at your library, at your home, anywhere you have an internet connection. And there's some really amazing tools that they've created that are free for everyone to use. That's what I'd like to say. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Mayor, Don Rogers, Walt's Aircraft. I'm excited. Brian Yoder has come in, one of my chief pilots. I'm excited to share with you, and I'm sorry, I'll have Brian hand out the brochures, but your airport advisory board has spent countless hours getting us ready for an event, May 3rd, for the airshow and fly-in. And so I would encourage you, you've got a month, put it on your calendar. It should be a fun day. They spent a lot of hours getting some really cool airplanes that are going to be on static display. The car show is going to be out there again with the Hutch Broad Run Group and Pancake Breakfast in the morning, so it's all in there. I would encourage you to go to flyhutchcansas.com for more details. There's some sponsorships. If there's some businesses listening or in the audience that may want to participate in the sponsorship out at the airport, I think it's going to be a fun day for the community to come out and enjoy the airplanes on static display. Tanker 95, which you're all familiar with, it fights our fires here. Bill Garrison will be doing two water drops, and that's always interesting to see if he can hit his mark on the runway. So we look forward to that. And again, for sponsorships, if anybody would like to encourage you to go to the flyhutchcansas.com, and you can sign up right there. But your airport board did a wonderful job in months getting us pulled together. We're right at the, we're on the finish line. So in a month, we'd like to see all of you there and the community as well to support the airport. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak in public comment? Seeing none, please call next item.
Item number six, consent agenda.
Any questions or comments from council on the consent agenda?
No.
No.
Nope.
I move to approve the consent agenda and authorize the mayor to sign. Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Item number seven, public hearing. Public hearing to consider condemnation of an unsafe and dangerous commercial structure at 2100 South Bone Break Street.
I move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Good evening, council. Jason Lady, building official. So tonight is a public hearing to consider the condemnation of an unsafe and dangerous structure. And setting a public hearing to consider the condemnation of an unsafe structure, the residential and storage structures at 2100 South Bone Break. So these are two separate resolutions. I just want to make that a comment, but we will be discussing these in the slideshow as one issue when we discuss the property itself. So this is the property at 2100 South Bone Break Street. You can see over here is the commercial, or is the residential property, and then over here is the commercial structure. So we've got a couple sheds out there. You can see a lot of other items out on the property and then the residential structure. This is just a quick overview of the residential property. Here's a couple of the sheds there and the residential structure. So a little bit of background on this. On August 17th, 2019, the building official at the time declared an unsafe and dangerous structure. And then on October 15th, 2019, City Council passed a resolution, 2019 or 19, to condemn the structure. Then on November 19th, 2019, a progress meeting was held and a 90-day extension was granted, beginning a cycle of what was seven extensions at the time until March 2022. On March 1st, 2022, council elected to remove the structure from the demo list. March 17th, 2023, a permit to re-roof was obtained and expired in 2024 with no work completed. On October 20, in October of 2024, it was approved by the, excuse me, it was approved by the State of Kansas Historic Site Board and January 2025 listed on the National Registry of Historic Places. Then in January of 2000, or January 21st of 2025, council set a public hearing. January 26th, 2025, city staff owner sent the owner some potential funding sources, including local programs, tax credits, and grants. That is in your staff agenda report of that email that was sent regarding those items. And on February 27th, 2025, D and H Home Improvement applied for a building permit. We'll talk about that a little bit more detail here in a few moments. When we talk about the January 21st, 2025 council meeting, council did ask that there was some proof of initial fundraising, illicit grants, and some middle deadlines that the property owner intended to apply for, a tarp on the roof, and then clean up the property. I do have some photos that we're going to show here tonight, but we'll go over the staff analysis first. Staff has declared this an unsafe and dangerous structure, believe it to be on, be beyond feasible repair. We believe it is a hazard to the surrounding neighborhood, and our recommendation tonight is that city council approve the resolution for a condemnation. Contributing factors include multiple broken windows and doors, partially collapsed roof, no running water, no electrical service, no operable HVAC, and poor exterior conditions. We also have contributing factors, which include 13 nuisance violations since 2018 resulting in 105 staff inspections. Those include re-inspections of staff going out there and just re-inspecting some of those, you know, nuisance items repetitively. There has a total property tax balance of $4,244 due since 2020. I would like to say that Ms. Grass did come in and address part of that. She did supply us with documentation for the 2020 and 2021 taxes. They are up to date to 2021. And then there is also unpaid water, sewer, stormwater fee balance of $554.07 due to the city. These photos were updated as of February 28th, 2025. The property, I've been out to the property a couple times since this date. The property really hasn't changed too much. There are a few items that I will address as we go through this. So here's a quick view of the front of the building of the property. You can see the damage on the roof, on the collapsed roof there. You can also see throughout the top of the roof that really doesn't have a whole lot of shingles or any protection untucked that roof for the trusses below. This is the south end of the front of the building. You can see that collapsed area where the roof's pulling back and up. You can see that tarp's coming off. That tarp is off more today than it was at the time of these photos. South side of the building, you can just see the boarded-up windows and... Here's the rear of the building. Also, the rear building from an opposite angle, you can see right here the trusses that have begun to collapse. And then you can see this unit, and I'm not sure whether that's a HVAC unit or whether that's a unit over cooking, but that's starting to collapse and fall into the building there as well. I did follow up on that today, and it's relatively the same condition or maybe progressing and getting a little worse. This is some quick photos of the residential unit. You can see damage to siding. The building's been boarded up. Further pictures of the residential unit and just the debris and items that are collected on the property out there. So I had in here, it appears since the structure was removed from the demolition list and no work has been completed, then that the building has deteriorated further. The historic designation of the commercial structure does not preclude demolition. If the city council were to move forward with the demolition, the structure would be reviewed by the Hutchinson Landmarks Commission with the ultimate decision resulting back with the city council. City staff have inspected and declared the structure at 2100 South Bone Break Street to be an unsafe and dangerous structure as defined in Chapter 21, Article 7, Unsafe Dangerous Buildings of the Building Regulations as adopted by the City of Hutchinson. Staff's recommendation is that the city council approve and adopt the resolution as presented to condemn the commercial structure as well as the residential structure. Allow 90 days for the property owner to complete the repair or demo of the commercial structure. Staff will provide written progress every 30 days back to the city council. July 1, 2025 should be the next day to the city council to review the progress of the rehabilitation or demolition. Staff also recommends that the requirements of the cash bond and the amount as determined by the enforcing officer. Which we did put an estimated cost of demolition and asbestos payment would be $400,000. And then the further staff recommendation, this is for the resolution for the residential and accessory structures. So mentioned that just a few minutes ago. I would like to say that I have had some discussions with Ms. Grass, and we talked about contractor did come in and apply for a building permit. The contractor did make a statement that, so this was not on the slides, because this is just in the last few days, that we spoke with the contractor. The contractor went out, reviewed the building, came back, had a trust package ready to go regarding the roof. And, but the contractor had some issues possibly with other structural damage. He said he wasn't going to place his guys inside the building. So I asked for a structural analysis to make sure that whatever structure they put back on the roof was going to be supported by the building. So they're supposed to be moving forward with a couple things right now for us, putting up a fence. to be moving forward with a couple things right now for us. Putting up a fence around the property to keep people out, number one. Number two, come back with that report from the engineer to determine whether that roof can be supported by the structure. And then from there, they'll, we'll move forward with the permit if that engineer's report is acceptable. I'll stand for questions if you have any for me.
First thing that comes to mind is the, okay, so the, the building permit that DH Home Improvement pulled.
Yes.
Have you rescinded the permit and are now waiting on structural?
Yeah, they never officially pulled that permit. They were not a licensed contractor.
Okay.
So that never was officially pulled.
So as of right now, there are no roofing or building permits active?
No, there are no active building permits.
And before you issued a permit, you are requiring a structural analysis?
Structural analysis, yes.
As a, like how old of one would you accept?
What's that?
How old of one would you accept? Like if there's proof of one within the past 60, 90 year?
Yeah, as long as it's under, I mean, we've been under the 2018 codes for some time. So as long as there's a structural analysis that would support what we need to review, then we'd be okay with accepting it all.
Okay. On the commercial property, on the exterior photos, is that mold on the, it looks like it might be boarded up along the, it's labeled on, in our documents, "commercial structure looking southeast." Yeah, that or that. That picture is fine.
Probably that picture right there.
Yeah. Is that mold on the, or is that just weathering or?
Yeah, I think that's just weathering.
Hard to say, okay.
That's mold. Quick follow up on that though.
And then on the residential structure, is the porch being supported by anything? It looks, our pictures are, like when I zoom in, I can't tell if one thing is a shadow or if it's a post. But it appears like the porch is not.
No, I think that back post may still be there, but other than that, it's not supported by anything other than that.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I believe when the permit was pulled in 2023, there was a, or 2022, there was some type of shoring plan done by an engineer.
Yes.
That's, we're beyond that shoring plan at this point?
I believe we're well beyond that shoring plan at this point. That entire roof would need to be replaced. There's some trusses that have, within the past few months, have started to collapse and fall into the building. So we're losing more and more of that roof, probably every day.
Any additional questions for Mr. Lady from council?
I don't have any for a moment.
I have none there.
Okay. So is the next, can you advance to the?
Yes, I sure can. I was going to do that.
Thank you. And so is this public comment for the public or is this public comment for Mrs. Grass to address the council?
You can take those in any order, Mayor. Probably Ms. Grass would want to address first.
Okay.
I said you'd probably want to address first.
Would you like to come up, Mrs. Grass?
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for their-
Can you move the mic down so it's?
For the condolences, cards and flowers and the death of my husband. And, come on up. And, and thank you all for postponing the last meeting. So since we met last, we've had a lot of changes. And we have visited with Jason. And not only that, we have a new contractor who has came out, looked over the building, willing to take on the historical and work out at Topeka as well as addressing some of the issues that Jason stated. Not only that, we've done cleanup around the property that was requested and we have paid on the taxes. So we're aggressively doing our best at this current times. Mr. Friars is the contractor at this current time. He had came down and talked to Jason, or talked to you on the phone, and voiced concerns of what needs to be done to move forward with Bernard's being a historical state and national landmark, which we are anticipating and looking forward to. So with that being said, do you want to add something, John? I'm going to have the contractor come up. You want to hear the contractor first?
Well, the first thing I want to say is that I want to apologize to the council if at any time you felt that I disrespected any one of you because I don't, and if you knew me, you would know that I have a passion for what I do. And I mean no disrespect to you, any of you. So that is a public apology. Secondly, it was my understanding today that when we had the contractor, or today or yesterday, request wanted to pull the permits, he was unable to. They instructed us to go through the Landmark Commission. Is that correct?
That's what they said. Was that what you agreed to, Jason, the Landmark Commission?
Uh, I mean, it would have to be reviewed because it is a historical building. So it would have to go through the Landmark at some point.
And the Landmark Commission, as you know, their purpose is to deal with this kind of thing. In January, we were told by the state that we have been selected as a historic site. Shortly thereafter, the federal government let us know that we were told that we were a historic site. The Landmark Commission, their purpose is to do things, do, help us do this kind of thing. There's a process that you go through. And, and we have yet to, we have yet to even speak or meet the Landmark Commission. This is the first time. And since January 7th, it's amazing that, fortuitous, that, that, that the last meeting we had, the Landmark Commission was there. And I said, my God, seems like we should be talking to those people. And as I reviewed the Landmark Commission's purpose and their process, that gives us a guideline of what to do instead of coming back to you and you do this and you do that, no, do this. It wasn't good enough. No, bring the engineer back again and again. And, and I believe that an engineer prior to this gentleman coming to the city, a engineer looked at that south end and he gave, gave a statement as to what we needed to do to shore that up. Again, the key thing I want to say is that we haven't met the Landmark Commission yet, but that's what they do. And we have never been told that's until yesterday that we need to go through. And as I reviewed it, as I Googled it today, it said 37 pages. And I didn't get through all 37, but I didn't have a hard copy. But I reviewed it, overview of it, and, and it was, it was basic. And, and, and the first thing that came to my mind is the application to the Landmark Commission to be approved as an historic site and those kinds of things. We've, we've already done those things. We've already done those things. So to go to, given us an opportunity today, well, I mean, you know, as I reviewed the agenda, it don't look like an opportunity. Looks like we're on a cutting block today as opposed to having our first opportunity to deal with the Landmark Commission and go through the process instead of a meeting here and there, 105 inspections, and never once told anything about the Landmark Commission or whatever. And, and, and I must say that, that, as of January, I believe it was January 7th, being approved by the state and federal government around that, around that date, that's when we should have. Our ignorance of the process and the procedures didn't allow us to go to the Landmark Commission. But you're not ignorant of the process. None of you are. The Landmark Commission is not ignorant of the process and the procedures. None of you. And, and I just want to put that out there. I'm not blaming and no excuses, but for once, to me, I thought that, my damn, finally we have something we can follow and go through a procedure and something that we can checkmark and something we can go down and say, yes, we did this A, B, C, and D, as opposed to coming and debating with you on what should and be done and how come it hasn't been done and those kinds of things. I just think that, that is grossly unfair. That is grossly unfair. And to me, to me, and I think the city of Hutchinson, to spend $400,000 and to rush into that kind of move, which I don't even think you have that much money in the pot, demolition pot. You know, I don't think so. Do you? Do you? Can I ask someone? Is there? Is that, I can't answer a question?
I, I don't know what that fund currently sits at.
Do you know?
Yes, sir. No, sir.
That's a lot of money. And I believe that that warrants the opportunity to go through the process that all other historic sites go through. Give us one shot at that. You know, the past is the past and it's an ugly past. But, but now there's an opportunity to go through the process like everybody else. And I believe we deserve that opportunity, especially when we're going up against $400,000.
With that being said, $400,000, I agree with Mr. Irving. Give us the opportunity to go through the process, work with the Historical Site at Topeka. That board is for us. They went through 1,000 applications for over 18 months to come up with our vote. And saying that is, we're just common people in Reno County with good food and a background and history of giving to the community. So what do we want to do? We want to show what we can do forward through the historical part of it, not this through the condemnation. So we did seek out a new contractor that has knowledge of what we're needing to get done. And he's here today. And Rick, would you like to come up?
If I'm not mistaken, the process of going through this, the historic or the Landmark Commission, to, to approve the contractors' scope of work, it's only a two-page document, which I believe could be filled out within an hour, within an hour, as I recollect. And you can check that, but I'm pretty sure it's a two-page document, basic questions. And, and to not have that opportunity is just, is mind-boggling. Do you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to make a clarification to the council real quick on the Landmark Commission comments. So anything that would be kind of out of the ordinary would have to go through the Landmark Commission. And Matt could speak to this a little bit more. But as, as far as the roof would be concerned, as long as the materials are being used of what, and replacing in like kind, then our planning staff would be able to administratively approve that as it comes through the permitting process. So that would not need to go through the Landmark Commission. But if there were any changes, which the Landmark Commission would have to approve at that time, then we would have to make those recommendations for review to the Landmark Commission.
What roof is currently on the building, for the majority of the building? Three tab shingles?
Shingles.
Those are readily available at any Lowe's, Home Depot, all of that?
Yeah, they'd just be normal.
Normal roofing material, yes.
Roofing materials, yes.
Mayor and council to add, in terms of monies for demo, it would just be covered through a bonding process very similarly to how we handled the atrium.
So instead of doing bonding and doing that, we're asking that you let us move forward with the historical part and restore it because we're, we're learning things. Unfortunately, it's still maybe late date, but we're moving, willing to move forward and do what we can to prosper not only Bernard's but the city of Hutchinson. That means once the restaurant and gift shop, one of the first gift shops in Hutchinson was at Bernard's. So there's a lot of history and that's why they came down and went through the building personally, looked at it, and they all voted yays. There were never any nays. And then you ask yourself, how many historical landmarks are there women in the state of Kansas? How many are there? Are small families? So that will put Hutchinson on the map, not only with the, the building, the structure, and the food. I want to go back to the shingles. A lot of this will have to be approved out of Topeka with it being historical. And again, Jamie Fiori and her department have been really good with that. And that, that's where we met in Wichita for the vote that day. Rick, you want to come up?
Well, I was wondering, is it inappropriate to lobby for a piece of that $400,000 to help make this thing work?
Yes.
Is that inappropriate?
Yeah. And I'll, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm having, I'm struggling with the situation. And a few things, and these are a few reasons why I'm struggling. We've heard similar stories for six years in front of city council. There's been a lot of commitments. There's been a lot of leeway given on time and extensions based on commitments, the commitments that were made, and then the commitments aren't followed through on. Now, in '22, it was brought up, there was some confusion in regards to what needed to be done through changes in city management and whatnot. So we drew-
Still confused.
Okay, well, we drew a line. The root problem has not changed. The building continues to deteriorate. And I feel like efforts have been put forth to try to get it on a historical index in a way to try to block the city from doing anything with the building-
Is that what you think?
Rather than actually physically doing any work to move the root cause-
Is that what you think, Mayor?
Well, it feels that way. When I gave-
You feel that way?
I did. We sat here.
You still feel that way?
I was sitting over there.
You still feel that way?
I do. I, I was sitting over there and I, I looked right at the two of you and I said, I understand. Let's draw a line in the sand. If you pull a permit to shore up the building, we're going to, we're going to clean slate it. You pull a permit and you get six months with that permit to get this building shored up. And it was, hey, that's fair. We agree to it. These, these terms are fair. Let's make it happen. Persevere and make it happen. That was almost, that was three years ago. That was over three years ago. So it's been not only six months, but six times that. And the only real work that's been done to the root cause is to get on the historic landmark. And, and the Landmark Commission reviews, reviews the permit process to make sure that you're using any changes to the building or historic-
We never knew that until yesterday.
I understand, but you got-
You understand?
I understand that, that actual physical work of the root problem has not been completed.
We wouldn't be arguing if we were able to go through the process of the Landmark Commission because there's a check- a checklist of things you have to do and need to do and the approvals. We wouldn't even be arguing.
We can go back to 2019.
Had you, had you.
We can go back to 2019.
Had you had the dollars you were with, sir.
We have a contractor in a bid that we've approved to work on. We're gonna review it, and we're gonna get this done in 2019.
Okay, might I add something? My name is Megan, I'm a friend of the family, I'll be a part of this entire process. You're talking about three years ago, what has happened in that timeframe?
I'm talking about six years ago.
Okay, well, let's go back three because that's when you said the line was drawn.
Correct.
Okay. COVID happened, getting a contractor out there was damn near impossible. No, that's all during COVID.
2022.
How long did COVID last? We're still having the repercussions of that. And I'm not gonna sit here and argue with you about it, but I'm just acknowledging.
You had a contractor, I've seen contractors.
Okay. And, and for you to say that there has been no progress on the building, that's asinine.
The root cause, the root issue has been that roof the whole time. And in 2022, it was let's shore it up, which was the easiest thing to get it just secure. But now we're way past that, and the whole roof is caving in.
Okay.
So it continues to deteriorate.
I, I understand that, and it, and it is, it is a problem. We acknowledge it's a problem, that's no denying it's a problem. But we are actively on the problem, okay? And, and actively making progress towards the solution, and also, what's that? I thought you wanted to say something. And, oh, I lost my train of thought, no.
We're working on it. But I'm sorry you didn't feel that way. We, we just didn't do this for the historical, but on the other hand.
It opens up funding opportunities for us as well.
Yes.
It, it was, hey, we don't have a problem with funding, was what was stated in 2019.
We're working with the Preservation Society, and she, her name is Megan as well, and she has indicated that she has some very good resources at her fingertips that she's ready to go forward with. And she basically was just waiting on, on us and in this meeting to see what was going to happen. And so with the determination from this meeting, we can go to her and she can put those things into place. One of them is she was gonna personally, and the Preservation Society themselves are going to back a GoFundMe page and open it up to the public and, and be an advocate for us. And so that, that will be a fairly immediate funding source, or at least a donation page for that kind of thing. But, but knowing that it's backed by the Preservation Society gives us clout, and, and, it's not something that Suzie, you know, herself is going to be promoting. So, I mean, they're, they're behind the preservation and the renovation of the building itself. Now, I would also like to touch on the residence. Damage to the siding, that's a brand-new siding, and that's a brand-new roof. And that's all been done within the past, what, year and a half? At least a year and a half, if not sooner. The property itself, I mean, I personally spent probably a day and a half out there within the past five days cleaning up what was very little left to be cleaned up. I mean, you can see from the pictures that there's hardly anything in the yard. The fence was coming down, we put that back up. So I don't know, whenever you drove around, sir, you said you drove around the past couple of days, and there hasn't been any change? That's crazy. Like, I argue that all day and night because I did it myself. So I would encourage you all to, to, if you all need to see for yourselves, please go take a look. Like, I mean, this isn't something that we're taking lightly, and it's not something that they have been taking lightly. These people have bombed through so much strife and so much, I mean, and I'm not gonna play the victim card or whatever, but let's give, acknowledge that, okay? I mean, she's here by herself doing everything that she can with the support of all of us. So, and I, I myself haven't been available for six years, but I'm available now. I'm a strong resource, as is the contractor. And, and, you know, so anyway, that's all I'll say. I'll let it go, but, yeah.
But I do agree with John. Further than spend $400,000 on demolition, let's, let's go through the historical society, do those steps. And I'm sorry personally, sir, that you feel like we wanted the historical society just to keep you off of us. Apparently you don't know any history about Bernard's.
I know history of what the last six years has been like.
Well, we've been in this community over 100 years.
And I know that sounds rude, but if we look at just the string of events over the last six years, it's hard to listen and say, we're gonna do this, this, and this, because we've been told as a council, even before most of us were on here, similar stories, and then things do not progress.
But we had things that unfortunately happened and got in the way, and this last one is a death, and I don't want a boo-hoo card. I want a card that, instead of spending $400,000, let's take that revenue. And I would like at this point, would you be willing to listen to Mr. Friars, our contractor?
I'm always gonna listen.
All right, thank you.
And I'm open to new information.
You know, the last meeting that we had, you, you directed us to, to, to go forward and get, and get that, get a contractor to do something with that roof. Amazingly, we finally get a contractor, he comes to get, he comes down here to get the permits to go forward, and he's denied.
Not licensed for this type of work would do that.
He's what?
Nothing against that, I mean, just, it's, it's.
He's what?
You gotta be licensed to do this work in the city limits of Hutchinson.
Yeah. He hasn't got, he doesn't have a license.
I'm sure he'll, he'll get that, but yes, those are things that are required.
Would you like to come up, Rick?
Well, at any rate, I think that's progress. And I'm, I'm, I'm still pushing for, we ought to have a shot at, at going through what all historical sites go, get to go through. And that's go through the process of the Landmark Commission, go through the process.
They're going through.
Even, even if invited to that process, that opens the door for, for, for resources, financial resources. It's my understanding that the, that the Landmark Commission says that if you're gonna do a, a construction south of 11th Street, that that opens the door for not only historical dollars, but also for neighborhood revitalization dollars.
That's, you've always been available.
Well, I understand, but, but not, not for us.
Yes.
No, we weren't, we weren't a historical site till January 7th.
You don't have to be historical for the NRP program.
Well, we, how, how would we know?
I think I mentioned that in the 2022 meeting.
You mentioned that when? You better read your minutes.
I bring it up all the time.
You ought to read the minutes. If you read those minutes, you tell me that I.
Mrs. Gress, would you like us to hear from your contractor?
Just as you say we've got a historical site to stall, I'm saying to you.
The circumstances.
Guys, I don't think this is going. Can we stop? Thank you. Can we stop? This isn't, this isn't going anywhere. Can we hear from your contractor if he would like to speak? Thank you.
We know your vote.
I'm open to new information.
Please stop.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Rick with R&amp;D Construction. I'm out of here in Hutchinson, Kansas. We are Class A contractor. And I was contacted last week by Suzie to come out and look at her structure, and she was concerned the city, she didn't tell me all the information upfront at the time. I set an appointment with her because, like good contractors, we're all booked. There's only a few really good contractors here in town. I, I'm coordinated with a lot of them. I might just start this meeting off as just saying that, you know, I bailed out, I don't know how many people in this town, Thai Food Restaurant, another business, you know, with bad contractors. I've made my, I've came to Mike, you know, over the years, I've worked with these inspectors for a long time. You know, it was a love-hate relationship, and over the period, period of time, they became my friends. So what I find is with a Class A contractor's license, it kind of can be abused. And, you know, find a good reputable contractor that, you know, can consult you properly. There's a proper step, proper steps to go about doing this. When I went there to go look at this, I know everybody's focusing on the roof, you know? This building is widely open. There's not a lot of walls on the inside of it, so there's not a lot of support holding that roof. These are non-load-bearing trusses. So it doesn't take much for them to sag or, you know, once they start having their integrity, you know, compromised. So with this being said, I went there and took a look at it, and I found it unsafe to walk on the roof. It needs to be properly, needs to be properly re-supported according to the code. That is, anything joists and trusses need to be injurally engineered, be sound. I called to, based off of my best experience of handling these situations, I called down to get an occupancy permit. That's normally the first thing you do on a commercial building. And that's when everybody comes together and we talk about how we're gonna approach this. After talking to the city, and I was denied any permit, and I've got kind of filled in and drug into here tonight, it is fixable. I've done tornado restoration, fire restoration. Sometimes people think, you know, homes are totaled after a fire, and we renovate them. It's, it's not that hard to re, you know, to redo some trusses. As I was inside the building, to correct Jason here, I found it, you know, not feasible, safe, good practices for my guys to come in there until we get some of the personal belongings inside the building out of there. It's also gonna be hard for any engineer to come in there and do a proper analysis, as what Jason wants, without being able to visually see everything. So there's some wet insulation in there, some old drywall and stuff that needs to come off to do a proper analysis. So first things first is, you know, to do, well, to do that. For safety, I suggested putting orange fence completely around the building to keep people out of there. It is secure, there are some broken windows. If it isn't secured and boarded up from the outside, it's boarded up from the inside. So, and even when I went there, they had to get a screw gun to unscrew the doors because they have it so securely locked up. So I find it a lot that, you know, I don't, I don't, people aren't contractors. They don't know the process. Finding a good contractor that can consult them. Yes, I, I'm actually good friends with Dean with DNH, you know, and he's only a roofing contractor. So I've, he's called me before to help him get him out of binds in the same situations. Everybody talks about the roof. Well, it starts with the foundation. And so the foundation on that building, it's a slab building, it's structurally sound. Walls, there's not very many walls on the inside, so it's not gonna be hard to get that support back up. And then on the trusses, I'd have to say there's only about 30% of the trusses that are structurally sound. The other ones need some reinforcement, and there's probably about, you know, at the time of when they had an engineer come in there, just a trust engineer, they only had five or six trusses that needed to be replaced. Now, just in the last few years, there's been some more damage, so we need to address those other trusses. So no sense in having a trust company engineer come in, and a structural engineer, a structural engineer can do it all. So I haven't had allowable enough time to make my contacts and everything without the permit moving forward, and then me learning about this meeting, I haven't moved any further. So that's my analysis on the building. But it is repairable.
Okay. This is what I got to say. First of all, he has a Class A license, am I right? So you say he, he has to get another license to do this as a commercial license, or what do we have? What does he have to do to get his license?
I have my license.
For this particular building? Is it a commercial license?
No. No, he has a Class A general contractor's license. He'd be able to do the work.
So he can pull the permit on this building with a Class A, am I right?
Yes.
But he was turned down when they came in to get the, for what reason was he turned down?
He was turned down because of the conversation that was had at the time was that there are some other things besides just putting a, putting new trusses on this roof. So there are some other things that have to be considered as far as the structural concerns, because we can go put new trusses on this roof, but you're still gonna have very similar issues to those trusses start sagging and, and tell there's other things to support them, because the building is so opened up.
Right.
There was a little consideration of the safety.
What I'm understanding is that he has, you have to get an engineer in to look at it again before you can start work on it. Is that my understanding right?
According to code, yes.
According to code. Now, let's back up a little bit. I was here when they started this project many, many years ago. And she, and, we got counsel, we're, we're, we're frustrated, okay? But they have been working on it. I went, I, I was knowing about this historical thing. I've known about, they have been doing what they can for things. It's, and I understand the other council members doing that, that's why I listen. But I've been around since this thing started, and they've been putting a lot of time and effort. We've had a lot of meetings with me to say, and, and to help them out going out with this. So am I wrong, am I right about this? The next thing you want to do is do a 90-day thing, am I right? Am I right?
Yes, we'd recommend the 90 days.
In 90 days, how much do they have to get done in 90 days in order for you to, to accept? Has to have the new roof put on it, or, or what?
Well, I think at that point, the new roof would be, need to be put on, and then obviously supported on the inside as well, so.
My personal opinion on this thing is this, these citizens went there into the Kansas State Day and got, got historical. That's not easy to do. They went and got a historical. That's not, that's not, I'm not telling them, I'm not saying it as an excuse, it's not. But from, as far as I'm concerned, for me to say, you ain't done nothing about it, they went into the state and got an historical on the historical site. So I'm having a hard time, and I know, me and Hems talked, my buddy, we've talked, and I understand what he's saying. But in the same token, I'm thinking that this basically, they have to do something in 90 days. I think we should give them that 90 days and see what they can do with it. They spent a lot of money on this. They spent a lot of money on this. And I've been there, I've been here six or seven years, I've been here when this thing started. So to say to you, I'm proud of what you guys done. Well, I'm saying, for you, I'm proud of what you done. But Hutchinson's not turning your back on you. We're not turning your back on you. But we're just telling you how we feel. And I'm not saying he's wrong, I'm not saying he's right, but I'm telling you how I feel, okay? For us to, for me, the 90 days, they deserved the 90 days to, to, to see what they can do with the building. We told them, I had, we had, I've had meetings with her before, she said you had to get something done with the taxes. She went and did pay taxes. How much more is it, is it, how much more in the taxes we got to do?
So she brought in receipts yesterday or today?
Today.
Today, for the 2020, 2021 taxes. So there's still the 22, 23, and then 24 will come due by May.
By May.
Yes.
That's a big piece. I mean, I'm not saying you can't do it, I'm not saying what. But the tax thing is a big, huge thing, because we all pay taxes, a lot of us don't pay the taxes, that's a big thing.
But I showed the effort.
But you are show the effort, no doubt about it. No doubt about it. You are show the effort. So in my point of view, I've been here, I've been on this council six, seven years, I've seen you guys go through this stuff, I've been out there, I've talked to you. That's why I'm so quiet, I'm thinking about all the stuff in my head and what we've been through. Our job is to help the citizens, and we're starting to help the citizens. But in my point of view, we gotta still help you. Now, on, on the grants, take the grants for instance, you guys have applied for the grants, am I right?
And the ones we applied for, we see them to Matt. So, Matt, you're aware that I've applied for grants, correct? The Hutchinson Harmony?
Can you both address the podium, please?
I don't believe I've seen any grant applications come through at this point. I've been CC'd on a few emails, correspondences, but I don't think I've seen a grant applied for.
So the correspondence that we sent for the Afro-American Grant and another grant said that they did not have funding at the current time.
Yeah, I, I did see that correspondence, but that wasn't an application.
We made sure that he did get that. And we're still applying for grants.
But you're applying for the, you're making the effort, am I right?
Yes, absolutely.
I want you to understand, I get a lot of calls from people. I get a lot of calls from people that doesn't want this to happen. They wanna tear your building down. But on the same token, I talk to them, and I tell them, I've been there, I've seen what you've done, I've been out there. But I also tell you what you have to do and get done to get going, am I right?
Absolutely.
We have a talk, no?
Mr. Richardson, on October 5th, on our nomination, my husband was currently in the KU Heart Hospital, wearing a milroom that pumps his heart to keep him alive. He checked out of the hospital and took a cab to Wichita, Kansas. He wasn't supposed to hear that nomination. I was frustrated with him. We turned around and put him back in the hospital. But he was willing. the hospital. But he was willing to ride four hours in a cab proudly to hear the nomination of a historical building. Absolutely. That's saying something for me.
Okay, let me ask you a question. Let's get, I'm gonna get real with you on something, okay? Why, tell me your personal reason why you want to save this building and why you can't build a new building and put your things in it. Do you understand?
Well, first of all, we talked about the demo. It's four hundred thousand. I'm not going to put four hundred thousand in that building.
I don't think, you, I think that's the city's cost of doing it.
Correct.
All right.
Because I need a permanent kitchen. I want to be able to, I need, not want, I need to be able to serve Tulets potatoes, which are international. Right now, through the Kansas State Fair and the Food Network, we're on the Food Network, under Carnival Eats. That says something for Hutchison, Kansas. So, I want and need to have my own kitchen and be open, generate money. I'm talking to the Department of Tourism. They have grants. So that means that buses can come, still again, get out and eat and shop in the fir, one of the first, um, gift shops here in Reno County. So it's not what I want. I need that building. Not only, I don't know if y'all probably may not know, we have, or had Rhodesia that represented Reno County. Rhodesia means the best of flowers from the roads and cities in Hutchison, Kansas. And for years, when you bought a wreath, a floral wreath at Dylan's, it was Bernard's. We didn't put a tag on it. How did Rhodesia happen? We went out and picked all the wildflowers from Kansas, fresh, and dried them and sold them. So again, we put Hutchison on the map. Rhodesia, Bernard's, Tulets potatoes. Everybody knows about Tulets. I want to continue to serve my mom's food. So when I contacted Mr. Friars, I said, look, here, it's not looking good, but this is what we're still trying to do. It's not a crime or a sin to be poor and a woman and broke. I don't use color. I'm a woman. I want to still make it in Reno County. So when I called Rick, I said, hey, Rick, this is what's going on. He said, I'm gonna be honest with him. I got to come in and tell these people what the condition of the building is and what it looks like and what can be done with it. And when he told me it was repairable, hey, it's on. I can't quit at all. This is in the name of salmon, Tulet Bernard.
Well, the thing about it gets me. I know you had a contractor in there. You went in there and got a contractor. He did the whole thing on it, on it years ago. I know it was years ago. So you have been working on it, okay?
Yes.
Uh, sir, what's your first name again?
Rick.
Rick. Rick, in your opinion, Rick, can it be, and I hate to ask this, I shouldn't be even asking this, can it be saved?
It can be saved.
It can be saved.
It can be saved.
It can be saved.
The funding and the biggest part right now is the business plan of how we're going to approach it and which comes first, the cart or the horse. So the occupancy, making it safe.
Yep.
Is our community's concern, concern. That's number one. Number two, everybody's focused on the roof, but you know, we got, got to make it structurally sound. So, I have, um, I told her, we did a big hail job and I got a bunch of metal, you know, that's sitting out there. I mean, we can throw it up there, but we don't have nothing to fasten it to. I mean, we can throw something up real quick.
Right.
For temporary. So.
This is my question to you here. Listen to what I got to say. You being a contractor, I'm sure you wouldn't put your name out there and say, we'll be saved if it's going to fail. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Right.
Same with electrician. I'm an electrician. I wouldn't go into a house and say that I can fix this house and it's gonna not work.
I have seen worse nightmares than Hutchison.
Do you understand what I, do you understand? Right there, that's the reason why I say this, because you're a contractor, a Class A contractor, saying this can be done, right?
Yes.
So that's my whole point. So, I'm proud of what you done, and we are sorry for your husband.
With, with that being said, with the proper procedures, with the proper business plan by following these steps and doing the occupancy, you know, when you talk about grants and anything, it's just like the city. I have done purchasing orders through the city of Hutchison before. I did Wells Aircraft floor. You know, you gotta have a dollar amount. When you apply for these, you gotta have a dollar amount.
Right.
And in order for me to move forward to get those dollar amounts, you know, I have to, I have to work with, the city needs to work with me and I need to work with the city.
Okay. Here's my whole point and everything. I'm a council member. I've been there almost eight years. If I try to go be a council member, but I do what, I say my vote and I talk what I believe in, if you could stand there and tell me you're a contractor and this thing can be done, then I believe it. Because you're putting your reputation. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yep.
Huh? But as far as, we've done this six, seven years. We've done this six, seven years. We, we have to do something. We have to do something. Okay?
Well, she found the right guy.
Okay, well, we'll see what happens, okay? That's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, when did Mrs. Gressman, did you engage with Mr. Friar, is that correct? When did you guys start working together?
Last week, right after the funeral.
Okay.
And like he said, to find a contractor here in Reno County that's willing to take on the project. And by him walking through the building and he said, I may tell you some things you don't want to hear, Mrs. Bernard, you may not like. He was direct. But you know what? That's good. This makes me a better, tougher person. I know what I'm up against. But he said, at the end of those things, good or bad, we can fix this.
But you're gonna have to get a con, another engineer in here and draw the plans up to make this go.
And it can't be done overnight.
No, I understand that, but.
I want the council to know, you know, you're saying ninety days. And you've been, you've been gracious, Mr. Richardson. I'm directness toward you, yeah. Everybody's been gracious, but there's been some things that came up and happened. Mr. Garza is aware of them. So.
And some of it's, a lot of it's just, a lot of people, a lot of people, I mean, like I said, I've dealt with this with the typhoon and restaurant here in town and other places that, you know, they've just been misled. They've been misinformed. And then, you know, when I come in there to go bail them out, they're already broke. You know, and I've, I've talked to Bike about this, Steve and Richard and, you know, like, I get kind of tired sometimes of being the whooping boy, you know, that comes in there and saves the day. But, you know, that's what keeps our reputation. And that's what keeps us. And that's why we're so busy. I will make a note, I will say that ninety days is pretty tough. You know, we have to coordinate. We can get in there. I believe she can get in there, get the stuff out of there. I can definitely get there, put silt fence in, keep it safe. But to coordinate time with the city, all of us get out there, fire marshal, you know, that's the occupancy permit, get with an engineer, have him come out, look at it, have him have a legitimate time to make some sets of blueprints. I know you guys have dealt with that before. It is time consuming. And then to go through the Historical Society to approve it, and if they don't prove it the first time, we have to make altercations and changes on that. Ninety days is pretty tough. So, I'm, I would personally, as a contractor, ask for more time. Not only that, but I'm booked, you know, we can fill in time to come out there and help her on some things, get the orange fence up. But, uh, you know, we are kind of busy. Ninety days is a pretty tight window for all that to be done. So.
Well, that's the motion in front of us. That's what we, that's the choice we have. That's the only choice we have.
That's the only choice, just ninety days?
It's not the only choice.
Well, I mean, that's the motion involved right now.
The recommended motion.
Recommended motion.
And there's, the Landmarks Commission meets on the second Thursday of every month. And, um, I have a habit of going back and watching, re-watching our meetings. And I did say that being on the Historical Landmark listing registry adds an extra layer of red tape to this project. And you and Mr. White went round and round about it. And I said, yes, it does. Because everything that you do has to go through our Landmarks Commission. It doesn't go back to Topeka. It stays locally within our Landmarks Commission. And they make the determination on the materials and, and just like Jason said, using like materials, et cetera. So, you will, you would be working with a local body. And that should not be a surprise to you, because I am sure that somewhere along the way, somebody in Topeka educated you about the local process that you would go through for these repairs. And then at our last council meeting, I essentially said the exact same thing. And then Matt read, um, I don't know if he read the ordinance or read something that, um, essentially said something similar. So, um, it should not be a surprise that you have to work closely with the Landmark, Landmarks Commission, um, throughout this entire process. Um, the, so that, uh, and with the code, um, like it's been said before, um, we're working off of the 2018 code. There should be no surprises in there. You're familiar with it. You work with it every single day. I know that it's, and it's hopefully something that you have, and it sounds like you have a good grasp of how to kind of frame that, um, to make other people understand it. Um, and.
And he would be willing to work with me patiently. I mean, on whatever time you give us, he's gonna pay. This is what we're, we're gonna have to do. And I will listen to him. I would not drag this man down here in front of all of you to embarrass myself, him, or you. Since he really wants the project to work, he knows what needs to be done. Like I told Mr. Garza, willing to keep on.
And I have already suggested to her, and I know she doesn't like to hear it.
But we'll stop right there.
But we may have to, you know, if.
Change a few things.
Change a few things. And we may have to get rid of some things with the approval with the historical. So, because, you know, money sometimes is a big, you know, a big part in all of this, you know, decision.
Right. I mean, so I wanted to remodel my kitchen a couple years ago. And when I found out the price of cabinet boxes, I was like, okay, maybe I can paint them. Because I was not willing to spend that kind of money on new cabinets.
But the good part is.
Should have called me.
You, you make, you make, well, it could, I could still do it someday. But, um, I got kids in diapers, so we'll see.
So since the building was built out of a lot of refurbished things.
And I know that you've been.
Historically.
Yeah, and it, from the story that you shared with us about how the building was built, um, that's essentially how you got, how the building got put together.
So a lot of things, we'll, we'll keep, work on keeping them historical. And I, and he said he would work with me on them.
Well, I have a few thoughts. Um, I agree with Garza. We have an obligation to help our citizens. And I feel like I have an obligation to the rest of the community that has contacted me about the eyesore of the building. And I feel like I've had several property owners contact me. I, there's a business down the street that have, has spent, I don't know how much he's spent. But I, I feel like there's been zero done. And I think that if anybody wants to have an easy decision, and I've, I've watched it three times. You just watched the March first, two thousand twenty-two council meeting. And I, I, I just don't see any progress in trying to do what we've asked to address the blight, address the safety of the building. So, I, I'm, I'm, I'm done being patient. So, that's where I'm at. I'm sorry, but at some point, we have to say no. I, I, I just have heard, I mean, I can see what happened before I arrived on the scene in, in early two thousand twenty-two. And then I watched what happened, you know, up until now. And what I've watched is, um, at the ninth hour, we have this discussion over and over. And I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to be honest, common sense, and I'm not the only one that sees this.
Does anybody have any more questions for me?
I don't.
I don't? Thank you.
Okay.
I'd, I'd like to say just one thing. Being an historical site by this, acknowledged by the state and the federal government is not a stalling tactic. It opens a whole slew of doors for funding. A whole different, whole, totally different. You understand? Totally different. That is a primary purpose of the historical site, other than the twenty-two sites that we have in Reno, Reno County for historical, uh, acknowledgement. Of the twenty-two sites, we finally, I mean, black people came here and did business before. We've been here. We've been here a long time. And, and the opportunity, that, that, that drives me, the opportunity that we can have a, an establishment for all times, for all times. And I, 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 I strongly believe that, that, that all the other historical sites, they were not all pretty in the beginning. Many, probably most of them have been renovated. If, if I'm not mistaken, this is nothing new. But to close the door when the door is finally opened for us to have probably tenfold the opportunity for funding because of the historical significance. Tenfold, the door just opened January seventh. And to close it, to close it, to close it, to close it in April, three months later, the door just opened. And, 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 and sir, I, 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 I feel, feel for you to think that we made that a stalling tactic. But you've got to understand, surely you can see that, that the door, the, the, the amount of grants that are available, tenfold because of the historical significance. And, and, and I think that, that, that every opportunity you have to get a minority business, in every opportunity that this council, every council has, that you can have a historical significance that minorities were here. If I'm not mistaken, Hutchison was a minority. He was an Indian. But more importantly, that's all I wanted to say, is that, 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 yeah, he was. That's what you say on your website. Don't, don't close the door now. Finally, it's finally opened. It finally opened. And, and, and surely you know that the primary concern, the problem, was money. The availability of funding, that was a primary problem. You know, that was a problem. And the door is open now.
The Historical Society, and then like tomorrow, I will meet with the lady at the Chamber of Commerce here in Hutchison, glad to have her. She's going to help me apply for grants and funding for the restaurant. So, and with all that's been said, I know it's been a long road. We have a contractor, and we're asking that you give us more time. Let us show progress. This man is willing to work with us. He's been the best so far. I don't know what else I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking for a motion to close public hearing.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to say anything?
Is there anybody else in the public audience who would like to say anything, public comment? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Item number eight, ordinances and resolutions. Consider a resolution condemning unsafe and dangerous structure within the city of Hutchinson located at twenty-one hundred South Bone Break Street Commercial Structure.
I move to approve a resolution condemning an unsafe and dangerous structure within the city of Hutchinson located at twenty-one hundred South Bone Break Street Commercial Structure and authorize the mayor to sign.
I will second that. I have a question. To clarify, that's set on a ninety day schedule for repair or demo.
Yes. Well, I, it doesn't say that. We can put that in the motion.
That's the next item.
The next item is the residence.
Oh.
So I've seconded that.
For ninety days?
Mm-hmm.
And Mr. Brown, do we need to declare a bond amount? And Mr. Brown, do we need to declare a bond amount with this resolution?
If you're requiring a bond, well, you don't have to declare an amount, because that's to be determined by the enforcing officer, which is the building official.
Could you all speak up? I'm having a hard time hearing. Please, I'm sorry.
That's okay. There's a, there's a motion and a second, as written on the agenda with a 90-day timeline. My question for Mr. Brown was if we are required to determine the bonding amount or the bonded amount, and he said that that would be set by the building official.
So we do have to have a bond, or?
That would be set by the building official, that's not going to be set by council tonight.
Why do we have to have a bond?
It covers the cost of removal of the building from the property.
Were you able to hear his response? Were you able to hear his response?
It's for the removal of the.
Right, it essentially ensures against the cost of the removal of the property. Greg, does your motion stand?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And what was the motion?
The motion was as written in the agenda.
For 90 days?
Correct. It's a condemnation with a 90-day timeline.
So you're saying we have 90 days to show progress? Is what you're saying?
Technically, that would be 90 days to remediate the entire property, as indicated in Mr. Lady's report earlier.
So, raise my hand, a question.
Can you come to the microphone, please?
The contractor said we would be more than 90 days under the circumstances. And so going through the architectural part, the historical part, he named it, we'd have to get with the landmark, get with Topeka, et cetera. So what I'm saying, can we have more than 90 days? Could we have 120 days, just for surety?
Well, and your property's been under this situation before, and progress shown has resulted in additional 90-day periods being given in the past. There's no reason why that can't happen again if progress is shown, and there's due reason why we can't get something done in 90 days due to weighing an architect, here's my proof of what the architect has going on, maybe your contractor's running behind, but it needs to be a steady flow of progress, and then we can decide if we want to extend it another time period.
I just want to make sure.
Just as, just as what's happened in the past.
Yes. And the Landmarks Commission that you would be working with, they meet on the second Thursday of every month and the fourth Thursday of the month as needed. They do cancel those meetings if there's nothing on the agenda, so my recommendation would be to work with Matt and Mr. Williams and with Mr. Lady to ensure that you have something ready for their meetings, so they're maybe at least aware of the issue. At this point, I don't know what they're aware of, so I can't speak for them, but that's who you'll be working with, along with city officials. This won't come back to council for at least 90 days.
All right. I just want to hear back there, make sure Mary everything.
Thank you.
Real quick, stay right there. The bond, does she have to get the bond, or we get the bond?
And why, why do I have to?
Hold on, I'm getting it clarified, I don't even understand it.
Because if the building's not gonna be tore down yet.
Hold on.
Why do I have to get a bond?
So this is the same process that we went through with the atrium? She is required to have a bond. So like with Mr. Joseph, he had an alternate funding plan, but it wasn't bonded, it wasn't a bond.
So say, for instance, this doesn't happen, and we have to tear the building down, okay? Now, at that point, when do we decide how much bond does she have to get? That's what I'm trying to say.
Her, a bond is an insurance policy. That she will purchase.
Right.
Based on the valuation set by the building inspector, that covers the city for the cost of demolition if she fails to do the repairs that's needed.
Mr. Lady's estimate was $400,000, which included asbestos development and demolition. And I believe, based on his presentation, that that would be demolition of both the commercial, the residential, as well as leveling the entire property. Is that correct? So my guess is that the $400,000 is what he would base the bond amount on.
That's what I wanted to hear.
Yes, $400,000 would cover the entire property. I mean, typically, a house of that size, $7,500, somewhere in that realm. The cost of the residential portion of it, minus some cleanup and things like that, would be pretty minimal in comparison to the structure, to the commercial structure.
So this is leveling the entire property, including trees?
Yes.
All of that?
This would be a bond for the entire property.
You got that, Sissy? You understand that? Okay.
And how much was the bond for the atrium?
Around a million.
Yeah, one million. And Mr. Lady and Mr. Williams would be, who will answer any additional questions. We're going to take a vote now. Mary, please call the vote.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
Item 8B, consider a resolution fixing a hearing date and time for an unsafe structure of 2100 South Bone Break Street Residence.
Do we want to set what date that would be for the motion?
If you approve the resolution, we have to publish for two, two times. Let me just give you an example, it's probably gonna be the second meeting in May, because you have to publish twice. You can probably get it in this Friday, and the Friday after, which would be April 11, and then our second meeting in May would be May 20th.
And that would be for what?
That would be a public hearing, similar to what we're doing right now, as a public hearing, but it'd be on the residential.
Just the residential, correct.
On the residential structure?
Yes.
Sorry. I oversaid. I met with the city manager a couple of weeks ago, and Mr. Garza, talking about the repairs of the house. And what did I understand? That you said it would be some new houses in Hutchinson for a year?
Yes, we're starting a new campaign, but looking at houses that are light. Am I right, Mr.?
Correct. She was advised that we did establish a new residential demo program to where we would address lighted properties, and she was kind of up to speed on that. That was the substance of the conversation on that. That way, she knew that, because a statement was made at the time where, do they feel like they're being targeted? And the answer was no, we're gonna take a clean look at everything to understand holistically what we're looking at, and what we have to, how we can bite this off. But they're not being targeted in any way.
Because it was new, new side of the foot on the house, so I'm trying to figure out why is it condemned?
I would, I would like, we'll cover that at the hearing. I would like to align this hearing, or this, yeah, the hearing regarding the residential along with the commercial property again.
So we have 90 days.
Thank you.
So you said 90 days for the commercial, correct? But you're wanting to have a hearing in May on the house?
Correct. So they, essentially, they aren't on the same timeline right now, because what we just voted on was the condemnation of the commercial structure. And the residential structure is not considered in that vote that we just took.
Yes.
So the next step for the residential structure would be when you are due back to report again on the commercial property.
90 days from now.
Which would be 90 days from now.
Okay. So what I'm trying to understand from Jason, why does, you said the house isn't looking different, but the taxes have went up on that property because there's been repairs He's going like this. So that's why I'm trying to figure out why is it being?
We could discuss all this at the hearing.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't be able to answer a question of the taxes or anything like that, but I mean, we've all seen the pictures of what we looked at, the condition of the property and poured it up, and the condition of the front, and I mean, there are some obvious safety concerns of the house, it is an unhavocable structure at this point, so it would have to be brought into compliance to be a habitable structure.
And at the beginning of your presentation, you did state that you were presenting facts regarding both the commercial and the residential structures at the same time. Mrs. Gress, I feel like all of your questions that you probably have right now could be answered outside of the meeting. Hopefully, you have a better understanding before we move into the hearing, which would be in 90 days if this next vote passes. But we can answer all those questions at the hearing, or in between now and then also.
So the next vote is on the house, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I'll listen.
Will we, will we have a hearing in 90 days, is what the recommended action is? So I was saying I would like to line these up again. So would May, second meeting of May be, put these both on the same?
Well, that's not gonna line up with 90 days from now.
No.
That'd put you back to July.
Mr. Lady has May 6th as the hearing date on this.
I think that's premature. I think May 20 is the first date you can comply with the ordinance.
Any discussion from council?
I'm fine withholding at the same time that we have the next meeting in regards to the 90-day update for the condemnation of the commercial property, which would be in July, I believe. It depends on how that falls, but that gives us enough time period to do proper public notice.
After July 1.
I think it's July 1.
That will be in the city council agendas.
What would be the July meeting date?
Probably July 1.
First, and so 1 and 15?
Because I think the 4th is on a Friday.
I know that's a common, one, that's a common meeting over the past couple of years, that more than one of us has been out on vacation, so that's what I was, that's what was running through my head just then. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve a, we're getting to that right now. I move to approve a resolution fixing a time and a place at which the owner, his agent, and lien, any lien holders of record in any occupant of such structure may appear and show cause why such structure should not be condemned or ordered repaired or demolished on or about July 1st meeting of 2025, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes. We said on or about July 1st. We'll be in touch in between now and then, obviously, but it would be no earlier than July 1st. At this time, we're gonna take a 10-minute recess. We'll be back at 7:18, or approximately. recess. We'll be back at 7:18 or approximately. Okay, we will hear the next item, please.
Item 8C, consider an ordinance authorizing issuance of go-bonds to pay for City Hall boiler, fire station alerting, and law enforcement center elevator repair.
Angelo Richard, Director of Finance, we have three projects that we intend to bond pretty soon. Probably within the next few months, we'll do a bond issuance. Because we need to pay for these improvements prior to when we're actually going to bond them, the IRS regulations order that we do a resolution ordinance authorizing bonding these projects. The projects, as mentioned, were the City Hall boiler, which is on order or in progress. The fire station alerting, that was budgeted for 2026, but that has been moved up due to priority. And then the law enforcement center elevator, they are currently working on that right now. The total project costs, along with bonding costs, add up to $710,000. We're hoping that it'll be less than that because we intend to bond this with larger projects like Woody Seat shortly. So staff and the bonding council recommend approving the ordinance as stated. Are there any questions?
On the LEC, is Reno County helping pay for the repair or rehabilitation of the access elevator? Or is that something, there's a pre-existing agreement that we take care of that?
Our pre-existing agreement with the county is that we pay half of all maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
So they will be doing both elevators. They're doing one elevator right now. This one was budgeted to happen in 2024, actually, but I'll do the other elevator probably later this year, is my understanding. It was delayed a lot because they had to find someone who could actually do the work.
There's a lot of ups and downs in that business.
Any additional questions or dad jokes from council?
I'm done.
Excuse me?
Entertain a motion here?
I move to approve an ordinance authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds to pay for City Hall boiler, fire station alerting, and law enforcement center elevator repair and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item 9, new business, A 25-16, fully integrated overall comprehensive master water plant engineering contract, HDR.
Hello, everybody. I am Erin Patterson. I am a project manager with the Utilities Group, and I'm here tonight to request approval for us to move forward with signing of the contract with HDR for the master water plan. We've discussed this for a couple of council meetings, but just wanted to go through again why we feel that this work is so important, and then walk through a bit on how we came to the recommendation with our proposed engineering company, and then go through again what the scope of the work is and the schedule. All right, so we've seen this slide before, but it's really important, and I wanted to reiterate on it. What is the purpose of doing a master water plan for the city of Hatch, specifically for our water systems? You know, this allows us to develop the overall water plan for the city. This is something that we don't have, and we don't have an adequate roadmap for us for the next 1 to 50 years for our water systems and utilities. You know, this will give us clear, concise actions to handle immediately, as well as what we need to plan for in the future. And it ensures that we have a robust system that handles, you know, what our changing environment looks like, what does our city population look like. And then it also gives us both technical and financial strategies to support our community. So it's not just going to be a list of problems or options, it's a list of problems and options, and how, here's how we actually go about fixing them or addressing them. And if you've got questions as I move through this, please feel free to just speak up as I go. Just some pretty pictures, because everybody looks, you know, visuals help, right? Couple of snips of some of the ongoing challenges that we face here in the city with our water utilities. Frozen pipes, repairs that we have to do due to main breaks, due to, you know, our aging infrastructure, or, you know, potentially things are not sized correctly anymore, right? So just some pictures.
Can you tell us what those pictures were?
Yeah, so absolutely. So the one on the right is Main. I don't remember, I think it was on Avenue A. This was from a couple of years ago, when we had a valve that failed on that main. And due to the valve failure and then the pipe not being adequately buried, it froze. So when you look at the pipe on the right, that is ice, and then that little tiny hole is actually what the water flow is able to go through. So you can see, it's quite a large reduction in what our volume capacity is, and we can't adequately supply those people on that system. And then on the left is just a repair that was made to one of our systems. Again, you know, having to do unscheduled repairs on our mains, they're going to happen, but we want to reduce the frequency of how much they happen, right? Because nobody's happy when they leave water to their house.
Thank you, because that looks gross, and it didn't look like ice. So I just wanted clarity on what we were looking at there.
That's a great question. And then this is a video, but I'm not going to be able to play it. So again, just, this is one of our hydrants. We had a failure on the hydrants, and obviously, when we have issues with our hydrants, that puts at risk the safety of our community. And so we want to make sure that these systems are reliable and robust. But it does, it's not too exciting. So if there's no further questions on those, I just want to get into the details of who our recommendation is for this work. So we went out for public bid on this. Four bidders responded. We went through a detailed process of reviewing their proposals, equalizing the work, and then holding in-person interviews with the proposed project team, as well as the leadership for those four engineering companies. The evaluation criteria, which the, we made a bit of an internal committee, and so the evaluation criteria which we used, and we shared with the bidders on who we wanted to select was based on their approach to the work, who the personnel, the project schedule, the experience that's going to be relevant to what we're trying to do through cost, and then quality of the proposal and response. And the weighting of that evaluation criteria is in the exact order it's ranked. So for our committee, we felt that the most important thing was actually how they were going to approach the work. And then personnel was next, because we want to make sure that we are getting the right team for this project, who is going to execute the work in a manner that works for our utilities and our city. And the really great part about what HDR is proposing is that, and they've done this for other communities in Kansas, is that it's not just us doing all this work, and then at the end of it, we have a document. As we start this work, we engage with the community, we engage with KDH, which is for our regulators, to make sure that as we're proceeding, we're, you know, taking into consideration and adjusting for what's needed from our community members from the state as well. So that way, again, we don't have something on the shelf. And then what we do have actually will work. Just a note around what our budget was. So right now, the scope of work sitting at 1.3 million. It's a not-to-exceed contract based on time and materials. Our original budget was about 1.7 million. I have recommended that internally, we maintain a 10% contingency on our site before those remaining funds get allocated elsewhere. That will just allow, if there's things that come up as we go through this period, maybe there's some new needs that arise from, you know, from our discussions or their facility visits. That gives us a little bit of cost budgeting to address those as appropriate. And then we did review the contract as proposed by HDR, and they, we had one change that was requested, and there was no issues from HDR on making that contract language change. And then just a bit about what the scope is. Again, so the work is, we've just worked through that with HDR, will actually be broken out into two phases over an 18-month period. Phase one is going to be the high priority immediate facility needs. So this is going to be doing the onsite investigations for the facilities. You know, there's going to be a suite of nine different engineering disciplines and operations staff who's going to be part of that. We're going to be doing an architectural and a life safety code analysis to make sure that, you know, we've also, our facilities are safe places for our employees to be working at. You know, the wastewater treatment facility was constructed quite a while ago, and we want to make sure that, you know, is there something that's, since it was built until now, there's something we need to address immediately. Part of phase one also includes a detailed data review of what the city's operating data is. We'll also be doing arc flash studies for both of the facilities, and this was a requirement that came out of regulatory review. We'll be doing the structural inspections of both of the facilities, as well as we'll be getting into the two primary digestors to make sure that those are safe, and that there's no, or if there are issues that came from the earthquake, we can start to mitigate what those issues may be. And then it's going to be also putting together the assessment and recommendations for the one-year CIP plan. So we've done an internal one. Now we're going to be building on to what our 2026 CIP work needs to be for the utility facilities. So that's the phase one work, and that carries through into July, assuming that we have a project kickoff in April. And then phase two comes after that, although there's a bit of overlap that we think we'll be able to have with some of these activities. And this is going to be the longer stretch of work where we'll be going through and looking at the rest of the water utilities and their systems. We've also, we're going to be doing some operational training for our wastewater facility. We're going to be going through and looking at, you know, the regulatory needs for our systems for the long term, and what's driving the industry. We're going to be looking at the existing systems and doing detailed modeling of what those performances look like. So that'll be, you know, around all of our in-town distribution and collection networks. We're going to be doing water source of supply well field analysis, and so that's going to be looking at our wells. It's going to be looking at the aqua floor, understanding the conditions of those, the overall health of our aqua floor, and what does our long-term forecasting look like. We're going to be looking at reuse, which is, you know, how can we utilize the water that we're treating in the wastewater treatment facility? Emergency readiness of the overall utility systems. We'll be doing that community outreach program that I spoke about. And then the long-term CIP planning. So we've got four years targeted on here. What is our five-year plan, 10-year plan, 25- and 50-year plan look like? And then we'll also be doing a detailed rate study to make sure that we understand what are the financial impacts of what the CIP works might need to be. And then also, what's, what funding mechanisms are available for us? You know, can we get grants? Can we get loans through SRF? And so that will come out of the phase two works as well. And then just a bit of a schedule for reference. So as you can see, phase one, like I say, is going to end right at the beginning of July. We've got some overlap with the phase two, and then the final plan, which will be implemented, right, would be in Q3 of 2026. Now, as we go through this, we are going to be getting draft documentation from HDR. So it's not like we're going to spend 18 months, and then at the end of it, we get a document or a report. That's not what we need. So there will be continuous deliverables, reviews, as we progress through this. Any questions so far? Okay, so.
I'm sorry, a question.
Yes, no, go ahead.
Based on, based on your chart there, wouldn't it be the earliest time we would have evaluations done to where we would have some type of priority list on repairs that need to happen?
For the year one, that's going to be in June. So.
So we potentially have that in June, we would have a heads-up on, this is a priority?
Correct. Well, we would have an unofficial heads-up before then, but the documentation will be in June. And then just next steps, I'm here requesting approval for us to enter into contract with HDR for the master water plan. So obviously, the first thing we need to do is execute that contract. And then right now, pending contract execution this week, we are going to be kicking off the works on Monday with our site facility visits that week. We've got the whole week booked up so far.
This does not include any arc flash studies on the well buildings?
Correct.
It's just the facility?
Correct.
Is there, do we need to be doing arc flash studies on the well buildings, or is that a separate deal?
Long-term, yes, we should. We should have the entire system addressed in that arc flash study, but the immediate need But the immediate needs is to address it at the two facilities. And that's it, for my slides.
So the 1.73 million is not just for the plan, but it's what we anticipate the, the entire scope of the work would be as well, right?
No, so the 1.7 was.
I guess not the whole thing, but.
There was two projects that were, one of them was part of this work. And then, there was the tower floor relining. Those two projects were canceled. And so, that money's been moved across for what this work is going to be. Now, obviously, we don't want to consume that entire value. So that's where the 1.7 came from.
Okay.
The contract value is 1.3.
Okay. How many in-person, oh, hold on, I found it. Six in-person in phase one. Sorry, I'm just.
What type of issues would they run into with that, with your contingency money? Any?
You know, if we need to have some more modeling done, potentially is an option.
So if we run into other issues, we can?
Yes, correct.
If they run into other issues and exceed the contingency funding, would you scale back the further, let's say you run into issues pretty early on? Would you scale back the scope of phase two? Or would you still move forward with doing the entire phase ones and phase twos?
My recommendation is you proceed with all, all of the work in both of the phases.
Because you actually still have another 271,000, basically, for that budgeted item, I guess.
And we don't want to spend.
You don't want to, but if you had.
But if there was something that came up that, you know, hadn't been considered or is there going through, maybe they end of the digesters and there's a structural issue and we look to them, because they're under contract, they're familiar with the scope. And we say, okay, can you please have your structural engineer provide us with a list of recommendations on how we mitigate this issue? Right, so that could be an example of an unknown. We get into all of our hydraulic modeling for the in-city utilities. And we have three cases, I think, accounted for in there. And then, maybe we need to throw in another case because there's another industry who wants to come into town or something along those lines.
So, question about the modeling.
Yes.
How, how would we know what these supposed industries possibly coming to town would be? Like, that feels like that's a, this isn't really a question for you, Aaron, sorry. That feels like that's a question of like, what is the chamber pursuing? So is that something that we could ask the chamber to work with us on?
We, we are taking into account some of the NDAs that, that we have looked at. And we are making sure that the main that we were to run to Evergy, excuse me, having more of a, a loop system down there. So it's not just a direct feed. But that in the event that we can pick up more industries. So we're just going to make sure that it's adequately sized to provide the volume.
Okay, and that project hasn't broken ground yet?
Yeah, correct.
And then, just to add to, and what Enrico was saying is that it's not like HDR is going to proceed on this modeling without getting our input and agreement before that happens, right? And so, that agreement has to go through, okay, you know, city engineer, the director of utilities as we go as appropriate. And then, we all buy off on that, and then they would go forth.
Okay.
And that's just one example. The way we've structured this with HDR is to be very much, you know, hands-on with this work. I've actually asked both HDR and their sub-JEO to join us in the meeting. So they're over there. And, you know, they understand the importance of this work with us. And the reason, one of the reasons we picked them is because I feel like they're going to be more of a partner to us than somebody who comes in and dictates to us what this work is actually going to be.
Where's HDR located?
So they're outside of Kansas City right now. But they're, we're going to bring in the appropriate team members for like our onsite facility inspections to make sure that we're getting the right people for the right job, not just because they're a warm body who's close by.
And so, I would assume that they work frequently within Kansas and with KDH guidelines and?
Correct. And HDR is actually the group that did our lead pipe inventory last year. So we've got experience with them, with Alex, with their team. And that's one of the reasons why they ranked the way they did for their personnel selected. And then, same thing with JEO, who's a sub-consultant to them.
Are we not able, this is my last question. Are we not able to do the arc flash study on the well buildings on our own? Is that something that we have to go through, like such a formal process for?
I don't believe there's anybody within the city who's qualified to do the arc flash. So there's some modeling that needs to be completed. In it, they build a whole network model for the arc flash. And then, they'll go through and do all the inspections. And then, they'll come out with, you know, what the characterizations need to be for that.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to public, speak to this item? As public comment? Any additional questions from council?
No.
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 Looking for a motion?
Motion to approve the 25-16 Fully Integrated Overall Comprehensive Master Plan Water Plan Engineering Contract. HDR unauthorized the mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody. I look forward to giving you guys updates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 9B, Kansas Transportation Alternative Grant Agreement.
Good evening, council. Justin Karim, Construction Manager, Engineering Division. Here tonight to ask you guys to approve signing the Kansas Transportation Alternative Grant Agreement presented. It's for our downtown Hutchinson pedestrian safety and access project. So October 14th, 2024, KDOT notified the city that we were awarded grant funds. So basically, this project would make sidewalk, curb, pedestrian ramp, and crosswalk repairs that were identified in the city's downtown Hutch master plan. There are 69 sites identified in a 27-block core area that need significant repairs. So basically, the estimated project cost breakdown per this agreement is $946,667 for construction, $94,667 for preliminary engineering, $94,667 for construction engineering. And that's a total project cost of $1,136,000. The TA grant would provide 80% funding, which is $908,800. The city will cover the remaining 20%, which would be $227,200. And we would be requesting that, those funds in the 2026 budget. The city would also be responsible for any overruns or any non-participating items. Previously, last time we were here, we approved applying for the grant. We were told that we would be eligible for our 20% match to be covered by the Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program funds. But unfortunately, before the grant was awarded, those funds became unavailable to us. So that's why it's, it's our responsibility per this agreement. So this agreement that's attached to your packet, funding breakdown on sheet four, article two, has the Federal Highway Administration and KDOT responsibilities and requirements. Sheet five, article three, the city responsibilities and requirements on sheet five, article four. So since these are federally administered funds by KDOT, the city will need to follow federal procurement procedures along the way, including selection of an engineering firm for the project, which is our next step, once we agree to the funds. The proposed project limits and identified repairs can be seen in the packet. The project design process and coordination with local downtown residents, business, and groups will actually shape the final repair locations. New PROAG standards, which is similar to ADA, will also impact how these repairs are implemented. So if we rip out something existing, now we have to meet the new standard. So some of these areas will grow to meet that. These grant funds would aid the city's goal on keeping our downtown well-maintained and accessible to all residents and visitors. So engineering staff recommends that you approve the resolution and authorize the mayor to sign TE-0566-01, Agreement Between the Secretary of Transportation and the City of Hutchinson, authorizing the 2024 Kansas Transportation Alternative Grants Funding. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Would these improvements include striping, re-striping, basically of all downtown?
I would say no, not re-striping. But if we did repair like a crosswalk or something in that regard that we, there's existing striping, then we would replace it. So yeah, these funds are more focused on concrete repair, so.
I see in the proposed budget, there's no utility adjustments that line item is zero. Is that because this isn't like deep enough that you would be accessing any utilities?
Yeah, so we, basically, we'd be taking off what's on the surface and putting back. So we really wouldn't be getting a lot of excavation unless there's base issues. But that would be pretty minor. Most utilities are at least 30 inches in depth. So we would be keeping out of those.
And I see that First and Main and Avenue A, it's essentially the entire, all four sides of the intersection, the crosswalks will have changes. Does that include any improved, like, signals? Like, I, I'm struggling to find the word, like the pedestrian buttons?
So this project would not cover that? It would just be strictly repairing the failed concrete or crossings?
But is that in the long-term plans for the area?
I, I couldn't speak to that myself, but I know, I know that Streets Department and Public Works does take a look at that. I, I don't know of any at this time, so I just couldn't speak to that.
So yeah, we are currently looking at some plans to look at the downtown lighting and striping as well. So that would be a separate project that would be handled primarily in-house. So this project, just be looking at that. But we are looking at those areas.
It seems like if we're making these repairs and directing more traffic down there, I know that not all of those buttons have like the audio cue, the auditory cues, that sort of thing. Will the concrete include? So, Justin, is it all concrete? Or is some of it brick overlay, like the decorative style? Because I know some of that doesn't wear. And that's part of the problem that we're fixing is some of it didn't wear as well as we would have hoped.
So those would be some of the choices we make in the design process. Do we want to go back and mimic what's there? And maybe do a product that's better lifespan? Or do we update to a new style and get the benefits of that? So that'd be something we would discuss. And we would take, and account the, you know, the downtown businesses. And when we do the coordination, you know, we don't want to take away from the aesthetic of downtown. But we also want a product that's worth our money. So we would have those discussions.
Make it pretty or make it last?
Yeah, or try to get the best of it.
I think stamped concrete would be wonderful instead of bricks.
Well, yeah.
Right, right now, the, the bricks, it's, holds water, so it just accelerates the decay. So if we did stamp concrete, that would allow the water to not have a place to sit. So that's probably, would probably be our recommendation. But we will visit that when we get to the design, so.
Is there anybody in, in the audience who wants to speak about this item? Any additional questions from council? Looking for a motion?
I'll move to approve the Kansas Transportation Alternative Grant Agreement and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Item 9C was withdrawn by the city staff. Item 9D, request for issuance of an RFP for the potential sale of Memorial Hall.
Good evening, Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. On February 18th, you were presented with an idea to, to contract with the landscape architect to look at a potential future for the Memorial Hall site as a park or as a, as a plaza. Had a lot of healthy debate and conversation at that meeting. And basically, it was left to staff to issue an RFP for the potential sale of the building. So that's what we're here to look at today. So in your packet is the full RFP. I do just hit the highlights here. So the RFP would be due May 30th. And then, we have an optional walkthrough pre-submission building meeting on the 25th. So essentially, eight weeks to develop an idea and submit that. Some of the key things we'll be looking for, so some of those requirements, would be an executive summary profile of the company. We want to look at their, the financial capacity and long-term sustainability of, of the proposal. Also, what is the business plan? So what's that long-term plan? What's the benefit to the city? So how does a city benefit from this new use of the building? And then, is it consistent with the other adopted plans? So the downtown master plan and the reuse plan. Selection criteria then are very, very similar. So we will evaluate those proposals based on these six items. So qualifications of that team. Do they have the financial capacity to actually do what they're saying they're going to do? Project timeline, viability? Is it, do we think it's a viable, a viable option or viable use of the space? What's the benefit to the city again? And then, again, the consistency with our adopted plan. I also want to be clear, just by issuing this RFP does not mean we are committing to sell the building. It just means we are asking for ideas. If somebody is interested to buy the building, what would they do with it? So, you know, we'll, if we're allowed to proceed, we'll get the proposals. Internally, we'll review them. And then, any decision based on that would come back to city council for final approval. So again, we're not, we're not dedicating that we're going to sell the building at this point. Just, we're seeking out ideas and opinions, so. I know that was really fast. But it is our recommendation to, to issue the RFP and kind of see what ideas are out there, so. Questions?
So in our meeting, we discussed purchase or lease options. Why aren't we saying that we're seeking proposals for a purchase or lease option of Memorial Hall?
I think we would, we, we could entertain the idea of a lease. I'm not sure the lease accomplishes what we want to, in my opinion.
My argument to that would be, a lease gives, allows us more control over what the use would be. Rather, what's it sold, we don't have any control over what the use is, what it's being utilized for. So I, I would want to, if someone had a great, fantastic idea, I don't want to turn away anyone from coming up with ideas, whether it's a purchase or lease option.
It seems like on the commercial lending side, you might be better served with a building purchase than a building lease.
I'm just, it just.
I have no problem, including both, yeah.
It opens it even more, more ideas that could come to the table.
It does.
Yeah, we can absolutely add that, add as an option in there, so.
I know it was something we discussed at that meeting, was a lease option. We're entertaining, we're fielding all kicks here.
A lease as in like a triple net lease? That way to kind of net us the same results as a sale? Because I think any other form of a lease probably wouldn't, at least budget-wise, help us much.
It would be, it would need to be a long-term.
Yeah.
Yeah, just like any other, we'd be landlord.
Yeah.
But we could put it in the lease what stipulations we have on the use of the building or activities to go on in the building.
Do we feel like this is enough time to get enough good proposals?
Yeah, I mean, eight, eight weeks is, you know, I, we originally, when I originally drafted this and we sent it out for some comments, it was a much tighter timeframe. So we did push it back to eight weeks. You know, I think there's some other people in the room that can probably answer that better than I can on if eight weeks is enough. But I feel like that's, I mean, typically, the RFPs are not out for eight weeks. We're normally on a four or six-week turnaround on those. And obviously, this is a much bigger project, so.
So what is the plan on getting this out into the world? As far as marketing the RFP?
Yeah, so we'll lean on some of our partners for that. I mean, we'll absolutely put it on, onto our website and those types of things. But I think it'll be up to some of our partners to help reach out to the development community. I don't know that we have a really great method for that, other than, yeah.
So if we submit this, this out to RFP, so you, I see in there, you got like, you have a business plan. They've got to present a.
So if we submit this, this out to RFP, so I seen there you got like, you have a business plan, they've got to present a business plan. Is there ain't going to be anything to hold them to a business plan? Like say they give us one, they purchase it and then completely do, do something completely different with it?
Yeah, I would have to ask our city attorney on that. I don't know how much teeth we can put, once we sell the building.
Cause that's the concern is we lose control of that building. That's why I agree with John, I think a lease would be a better option for us, we have better control. So what's the answer, Mr. Brown?
Well, depends on the terms of sale. Maybe we put a certain zoning classification on it, it limits what it goes to.
Okay.
If, if we were to approve it tonight and it went out into the world this week, we basically give two weeks to come back with any questions in regards to asking for additional information. It seems tight.
So your original comment, I think the reason why they made it so tight is because your original comment was you wanted this like resolved within 90 days.
Yeah.
So you're contradicting yourself right now, I'm just going to tell you.
It's not the first time.
I know.
It won't be the last time.
Because I had that conversation with staff as well, that like the 90 days, I basically said, yeah, we're not going to be able to do 90 days from the last meeting. There's going to have to be some give there, so.
Well, I'm asking about the April 18th, that's not the due date.
No, but it doesn't give much time to find out about this when we don't have a clear marketing plan and then come back with questions. I agree. So we're going to have to forego that 90-day period if we want to extend all this. And I think that's a good idea. It does seem like a very tight timeline.
I'll contradict myself again on that at some point.
It's a good point on the April 18th, so I think that, that can be pushed back.
And are you the contact because it falls under buildings?
Yeah, primarily for if somebody wants to see the building, if they have questions about the structure of the building, if it's more of a development question, I'll direct that to matters to David, so.
And during that question meeting, would we have like architectural plans and whatnot to support like questions about fire code and occupancy and?
My intent was to post the RFP along with the downtown master plan and the reuse plan. So they'll see the structural report, they'll see floor plans, all of that in the, in their reuse plan, so.
So I have a question though too, I thought we had kind of decided to table this to, so the 90-day, well, how long had it been since we talked about this last thing, maybe it's been 90 days? But I thought we were going to allow the public to, to bring forth ideas of potential options for this Memorial Hall. Was that, am I remembering wrong? Must be.
No, not really. I think we were operating under the assumption that both things can be true at the same time and that we can move forward with the RFP while also engaging with the public. And you know, if we put this out and it comes back in, what's our due date? I got on the wrong page.
The 30th.
Yeah, May 30th.
May 30th. Then that doesn't go back before us until mid-June.
But if you have a potential buyer looking to purchase this going, well, they could back out on us because somebody from the public decides that, hey, this is a great effort, this building, we back out on it. I mean, I don't know if you'd get actually a true investor willing to put money into it if they're knowing, well, we could do all this work and then they back out on us, you know, that's, that's the
I don't think there would be any money due to submit the RFP.
I'm not saying money due, but just interest in it.
And I would hope that anybody's plan would rally support rather than turn the public off to it.
I was thinking more potential people coming in through the RFP, that they, we might turn them away but based off of that information that we could back out of at any time. That's just a concern I have, so.
Yeah, that's fair. Is there anybody in the public who would like to, well, does council have any additional questions for Justin? Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak about this item?
Good evening, council. Deborah Tuftel with the Hutch Chamber and Downtown Hutch. And I guess if I was willing to come to the podium the first time to speak in favor of an RFP, I should probably be willing to come up today and speak for the public. On behalf of stewards of the Downtown Hutch Master Plan. First of all, kudos to the city staff for putting together a, what I think is a really well-founded RFP. Granted, it is a very tight timeline and granted, some great points were made about whether the RFP should keep open the possibility of a lease arrangement, which would allow the city to retain some ownership and control. Should you enter into an agreement with someone and five to 10 years down the road, things are not going the way that you wish for it to, the return on investment isn't there, some things fall into disrepair, you would retain a great deal of control if you would enter into a long-term lease arrangement that gives you some control to come back and unwind that. Some of the process that both Laura Meyer, Dick and I spoke at the podium before and we both said we were committed to assisting with the RFP. And we did engage with Ken Boone with Olson Studios, who was the, one of the authors of the Downtown Hutch Master Plan. And so he had a hand in providing some suggestions to elements to the RFP that we then provided to staff and they've woven those into this. So the only comment I would make is that I do think probably starting the clock now and allowing eight weeks could be a really tight timeline, you might want to add some latitude. Just depending on, you know, I know you're looking at budgets in, for 2026 by the time that this timeframe wraps up. So you may want to make some decisions, I get that. But I might encourage that you look at a 90-day window from now, maybe allowing for inspections through the end of May and responses by June 30th, for example, just to give the development community some time because there is some investment in reimagining a very large structure. So anyone that's going to take a look at this from a business case is going to have to do a little bit of structural analysis based on the report that Justin will provide. They may have to engage an architect or an engineer and spend some money designing something new within the space. So that could take some time, just knowing the limitations of timelines of engineers these days and architects, they're all very busy. And we do want to help with getting the word out to the development community. Some of the ideas that we have talked about include engaging Olson Studios and their network of community partners that they have worked with around the country. They may have some ideas of developers. Also engaging state historical preservation folks who work with a network of people who have dealt with structures, maybe similar, maybe dissimilar, but still historic structures. We certainly want to make sure that some of the historical integrity of the facility is maintained if we're going to keep the, the buildings. So besides it brings some resources to bear, so I think engaging them in this conversation and their networks is valuable. And then just bringing creative, creative ideas forth, we want to have a hand in, in helping with that. So however you see Downtown Hutch and the Chamber assisting, we're here ready to help spread the word that the city would like to find the right partner with the financial wherewithal to take this forward and alleviate the city's losses that you're currently experiencing. So thank you for this step.
I'm not going to speak on the timeline, I'll wait for someone else to say something about that.
That would be, that would be my entirety of my comments unless you have questions for me. Thank you.
I wasn't going to get up here tonight, but I just wanted to say thank you to council and staff and Enrico, Justin. And he actually gave us a tour of a perspective developer yesterday, investor, and he did a great job. And I saw places I'd never seen before, so thank you. My only comment is I think it is a little bit of a timeline if we look at when I first came here about the landmark building and how long it took me to really get going and know that I, the process would work. It's at least 90 days would be gratefully appreciated, so. But thank you all for giving us a chance.
Good evening, council. Tony Finley, Hutchinson Recreation Commission. Again, on the opposite side of this. I believe Enrico forwarded you the letter from the Rec Commission. We feel that it is a mistake to entertain moving it into, to private hands. We feel it goes against the intent of the downtown plan for a civic amenity block. Definitely kudos to, to Justin and city staff for putting in the, the RFP, the intent to fulfill what's there. But you know, a developer could come in, things happen, five years is still sitting there. And the intent of the downtown plan has stalled because city doesn't have control of that. It's been mentioned that these public spaces could be done somewhere else. City doesn't have control of any of the other blocks in downtown. And so this is the one block where that makes sense. With that said, we're not saying that tearing down Memorial Hall is necessarily the right answer, but moving it over to, to public or private control really just negates that entire intention of the plan. So understanding that, you know, the ball's rolling and it's probably going to happen, we would at least like you to consider going through with maybe some other options that stay on the public side, whether that's demolition of the building and what could be done in that space or other alternatives for the city to retain control if the improvements are made and that, how that can be best used by, by the public. You know, it's got a longstanding public history, it's always been. My understanding is in the public realm, we think it'd be a mistake to move that from the public side. Happy to stand for any questions.
So philosophically, I'm in the same boat as Tony. I, I would vote for the issuance of the RFP with some amendments to the timeline. However, that's simply so that we can, at the very least, say that we exhausted all options. The letter mentioned by Mr. Finley mentions the, that Hutch Rec is willing to share 50% of the cost of that conceptual design. $18,000 was the total cost, if I'm right, okay. So that would put them paying nine, us paying nine, just about. I feel like going through with the RFP, we're probably looking at a sunk cost by staff of just guessing time and salary, all of that. What it's going to take, we're probably looking at $9,000 worth of our own time spent on this, if we're calculating minutes. I would like to see us approve the $9,000 to move forward if your offer is still good, Tony. At the same time as moving forward with the RFP. That way, we do have both options to consider kind of at the same time.
And I, and I will add to that, as in the last meeting and in this meeting, when there was debate over the plan itself, you have kind of the spirit of the plan and then the letter of the plan, and oftentimes those can conflict. And so you, we've seen issues even within, they're not issues, but at least some discrepancies where even the downtown master plan itself may have a little bit of tension even between certain elements of it. And that's okay, that's normal, you can't catch everything. And so I still think no matter what we do, we're still in keeping with the plan itself, whether it's the spirit of it or the letter of it. And so that was really the, kind of the crux of what we were talking about last night. Because to Tony's point, it is part of the civic amenity block. And how do you want to reimagine that? Whether it's a taxable entity or Memorial Plaza or whatever the case may be. I think anything is still safe, so I did want to throw that out there, it just didn't really come to me at the last meeting.
When we were presented and approved the Downtown Master Plan, I think there was a conversation about how it's essentially a, it's a wish list of everybody coming together and working together, government, private sector. There were things on there that would require the sale of private property and a lot of public investment or a lot of private investments, sorry. And there's no guarantee that any of that happens. And even with putting out an RFP, there's no guarantee that any of that happens. So I, I want to see us pursue maintaining control of this space while also pursuing not maintaining control of the space with the RFP. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in the audience? Jesse, you're next.
Justin Karam, Construction Manager. One unique feature of that building is we have a storm box that goes underneath. And so when you guys discuss selling it or leasing it, who retains ownership and maintenance of that box would probably have to be discussed as well. So I just want to bring that to your attention. Brad, he's still here, him and I are anxiously looking forward to treasuring through those boxes and kind of inspecting it. But as you guys move forward, that would be something that would have to be determined, so.
Is that mentioned in the RFP? Justin, or Justin or Justin?
I do call out that the building is built over the creek, so I didn't call out specifically that, about the long-term maintenance and, and hopefully we will never have to do any maintenance or long-term rehabilitation of those structures. But it's at least mentioned that the creek's there, so.
Yeah.
I did have some informal discussions with Brad with JEO. And it, it would be ill-advised for the city to at least not retain like a permanent easement under the facility so we can ensure that it's not obstructed or anything like that. So it, it would be best for us to keep at least a permanent easement under our control.
Any additional public comment?
Jesse Juma. Maybe first is, I think we do need to take some time on this. We've been kicking this can down the road at Memorial Hall for decades. And it's because we haven't done anything in the past is why we're in the situation we're in again now. So this time, if we're finally going to actually have some serious discussion about this and some movement on it, it's not something that's going to happen very quickly. So we do, I think we had a little bit of a consensus here that we take a little bit more time for the people to respond back to these RFPs. And also talking to some of the council members, you know, we did discuss, and I think, you know, when you brought up the lease plan, that was better to keep control of what happens with the building as opposed to letting it go private. So that should be included as an option. I got a couple of points I just want to address, and I know you guys had a long meeting today. So one, to extend the submission due date. Because when you approach somebody about coming in and what do you want to do with this hall? And I will be part of that process because I know people that would be interested in this building. And that's on a national level. So when you address these people and some folks, it's almost like cold calling them with, hey, there's a building here that needs $5 million in renovations. And do you have a plan to come in and do something with this building? They're not just going to come up with that ideal in a month, two months, three months. And then, and then, you know, you have a, and then you have a, you know, a thing in here about, you know, does the person want to come down and take a look at the room, you know? Well, if we're talking from somebody coming from out of state, you know, they're going to have to make times to put this in their plans to travel and all that kind of stuff. So this isn't a fast process. If we want to do it right. There's so many things, and you guys know my history with advocating for this room for many years. Don't even get me started. And I may address that, but what I'd like, one of my other things, so despite adding that time to this RFP for response, the other thing I do want to propose is that we do have a public input meeting and preferably at Memorial Hall. if we want to have a town discussion about this building. Because I think we will need Memorial Hall to hold the capacity of the people that will come down and support of that room. So I got plenty of things I could say still for this. And if you want to ask me a few questions, I'll address some things quickly because I don't want to make this meeting run any longer than we have to right now at this point. My point is, it's still going to take time to resolve this issue. It's been an issue that we've been addressing, I don't know if I'm going to say 113 years, but almost. It's been here that long. It was built as a community building for the residents of this town to meet, you know, have a place where they can meet. And it's been serving that purpose for 113 years and still does today. There is not any reason to take that hall down. It's actually to keep it going. Don't even get me started about comparing it to the sports arena. Because we spent $30 million on that. And all we're asking here is $5 million for this thing, for this hall. So one thing I want to hear, if we are going to have a public input meeting, so, you know, that way I can hold myself back from floodgates with all these other things that I could tell you about that room. And we can address it at that meeting. So I propose that we do have a public input meeting at Memorial Hall. And then, you know, or just a meeting about the hall, period. I don't know what that means, but just anyway, somehow we have a public discussion about it or more public input. Because I know there will be and there is, just, you know, we have these meetings in the evenings now and it's a, and by the time we got to this, you know, it just isn't easy for people to make it down here. But if we made that meeting reasonable, I'm sure we'll have a bigger input. So I'm just going to leave it with that for now, is that, you know, extend the, extend the, the submission date and also to maybe include some lease agreements in there. Then also to continue to have a, we need to have a public input meeting.
I have a question. I have two questions. The public meeting, so my understanding is that you're against the concept that Justin Combs provided, which demolished the building. So just yes or no, in a way?
Yes. Justin and I are associates. We talk, we get along, we talk and everything. But Justin, yes.
So do you?
I do oppose you taking down that building.
So do you think that, and I'm all for having a public meeting. I think that that's a key to getting this project right. Do you think that that meeting would be best held after solidifying a concept versus the very, very, very rough draft that we were presented?
I actually, sorry, I actually think that now that you put it that way, we can extend this RFP submission further so that we can have that public input meeting before. I mean, we can put a date out there, but still, set this meeting date before that submission's closed. Yes. Because when we have that public, that's why we'll make a whole separate other meeting so that I can address some larger issues and the public can still have some larger.
Right. I mean, it's hard to say I'm against demolition of the building, but I'm for other uses of the building without actually seeing both sides fully considered. I don't know if it's standard practice to allow public input on RFP selection, but is that something you would be volunteering your time?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I've had, I've had resolutions for this building for 20 years, last 20 years. You know, I've said I'm trying to keep this short, but since you asked me, you know, I have a, you know, I can, oh, 2003, when we, you know, I'm the one that came to city council back in, I think it was around 2003, for a, for management of that room. Because I was telling city council then, and it still does today. The room just sits there in essence. I mean, like the sports arena, at least it has a, you know, there's no official place to go to promote and market this hall. But the sports arena has a, something on the Hutchrick. You guys even have a little something, like a page for the sports arena on the Hutchrick. How come, how come they don't have a page for Memorial Hall? You know, as another venue that's accessible. You know, Tony uses the room, you know, the Hutchrick uses the room just as much as, you know, they use the sports arena or anything else, you know? So why isn't it marketed, you know, what, I have a page, you know, on there also, you know? But that's the point. That room has just been sitting there with nothing happening to it. So nobody really, is it really marketed well that people, the public knows that it's there to use? I don't even know where I was going with that, but that was just another point. So, oh, I was telling you that back in 2003, I can't remember, I had a copy. Oh, so if you want to just go back and look at some history, back at the time when I said we need management for that room, so we kind of had it down to two entities. One was the Fox Theater to come in and manage that room. And the other one was a company called SMG at the time, which, which, which now, as time went on, SMG merged with AEG, which they formed an entity called ASM Global, which is, if not the largest, because they do work with Live Nation, they are the largest concert promotion entertainment company in the world. If we would have took that agreement, because at that time, SMG wanted also to manage the sports arena and have the option to put shows out at the grandstand at the fair. So Hutcheson could have been like on the map as a live music city. Instead, we chose to go to the Fox. That was a conflict of interest right there. Because when you get the manager, director at the Fox to manage the Memorial Hall, and, you know, just like when you're looking at, where am I going to put an artist at that maybe comes to you that wanted to do a show? How is she going to choose between, other than if you think you're going to sell more tickets, so you probably need a bigger venue, but still, it would be hard to choose. Am I going to put this in the Fox? Or am I going to put this in the Memorial Hall? And that's why that contract didn't work. And I think we kept that contract at $50,000 for five years. And that's why when you think you have a bad taste in your mouth, how we tried this management contract thing before? It's because we gave it to the wrong entity. Nothing against the Fox, but that wasn't going to work. And if we would have gave it to SMG at the time, SMG, like I said, they ended up merging. They became a bigger promotion company. But SMG now manages, well, not SMG, it's ASM Global now. But they are the ones that are managing the interest arena in Wichita now and the Century Two, another municipal auditorium, you know, to Wichita, Century Two.
I do think what you're saying is really interesting. However, I think we're getting into the weeds just a little bit here.
Exactly.
So I'm going to cut you off if that's okay.
No, but this is why I said we need another separate meeting.
Absolutely. Yes.
But my, so my thing is, let's set up a meeting for Memorial Hall again with public input and then also extend this RFP submission deadline.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak in public comment on this item? I'm going to make a motion that we fund, give me one second. That we fund the conceptual drawing at 50% of a cost share with Hutchrick. As well as pursue the RFP with some date changes, with those date changes to be set by staff, if council is comfortable with that. And allowing them to extend this RFP timeline out by however much they see, they see fit. Not 90 days.
I remember from our last discussion that we didn't want to spend the money until we exhausted every resource to try to, we didn't want to spend the money and then have that plan sitting on a shelf. If somebody came along and purchased the building. That's how I remember the last meeting. So I would be opposed to that. I'm certainly for letting the RFP go long, but I don't want to spend.
So considering that one of the options of the RFP is to reject all bids, I think that the conceptual drawing or design allows us to have all of the information when making that decision so that if we want to reject all bids, we have an understanding of an alternative path to move forward. Because we're also going to be entering really heavy into budget talks here within the next, definitely within the next 90 to 120 days. And Memorial Hall, this seems like this would be something that we will need to account for in the budget. Keeping it on the rolls as is versus making changes versus accounting for its sale, et cetera.
Can we set at least a minimum timeline, not to be less than? For staff to come up with a date?
Yeah.
Not to be less than at least 90 days from now? What do you want to set at?
Do you think May 1st to end the time of questions would be adequate? That gives you 30 days for your question period? And then you would set?
That's only seven days longer in the RFP, the current RFP.
The 18th to the 30th?
I thought it was the 25th through?
18th, April 18th.
To have questions in by April 18th.
Oh, okay. The tour was the 25th.
Yeah. I would say, I'd say questions need to be after the tour, tours are over. In case there's something that comes up during the tour, to get questions answered on. So if the tour's happening at the end of April, the questions need to be a few days after that, at least.
So May 1st for tours, allow two weeks after that, which would put you at, I'm just looking at business days. Say May 2nd, which would be a Friday for tours. May 16th?
For submittal of questions, deadline.
For questions.
And then staff needs to have a couple of weeks to answer those questions. So that puts us into June. I mean, end of June is 90 days. Still might be tight for some, but it's better than what it was. No less than those dates. How's that? No sooner than those dates.
Paul, do you understand what my motion would be?
Not a word. You've jumbled three different things together.
I did.
We don't know what you're doing.
Well, no, I'm following.
So my motion.
I want to hear the motion.
Okay.
Because we've got to put it down.
I am, I'm going to restate it.
Hold on.
No.
That part of the motion, that for the 50-50 cost share, I have the dates down. But there has been discussion on the leasing. Do we want that to also be a part of the formal motion?
Yes.
Okay. Just making sure because it wasn't mentioned earlier.
So I will, I rescind my motion and I have a new one. I hope your eye roll is on camera.
Yes, I'm rolling my eyes.
Okay. So my motion is I, I move to approve the RFP with changes for the potential sale of Memorial Hall. Changes to include the tour period to end no earlier than May 2nd, the question submission period to end no earlier than May 16th. The option to lease should be included in, in the RFP language. And it should include a 50% cost share of approximately $9,000 to, I don't have the name of a vendor, for the conceptual design of Memorial Hall.
So now that you've stumbled through all of that.
That's my motion.
Well, I, I'm okay with extending all, everything you said except for the conceptual drawings. I'm not on board with that.
So let's take a vote.
Okay.
Do you need a second first?
I do need a second.
I'll second it with the due date, final due date no sooner than 90 days from today. Is that part of your motion?
Yep, it is now.
Okay, now back up.
Paul is going to come up here and slap us.
He's not including the drawings, the money for the drawings.
He's saying he's going to vote no.
I'm going, yeah.
And I'm saying I'm going to vote no.
We need to vote on her motion. And if it doesn't pass, then they can make a motion. And one of us can second it and we'll vote on that.
Well, it'll be easy. She already made the first part of it.
And I'll second her motion.
Thank you.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
What happened to, I agree with Scott. We weren't paying so much money, then we're going to spend another $9,000 on drawings we might not even get to do. So we're spending money, we're still spending money on Memorial Hall. That's the problem I'm having right now. I go ahead and say yes, and we don't do anything, but we get the drawings out there, we pay half of it. We're still spending the money on that place. And I like Memorial Hall, but man, it's helped me, the commissioner.
And no one's going to hold it against you.
I say no. I go with Scott.
Fast?
No.
Magers?
No.
Goss?
Yes.
I would make a motion, just the first part of Stacy's motion, for the extended timeline.
And inclusion of a lease.
Excuse me?
And the inclusion of a lease option.
Yes, yes, I do. I think pretty wise.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Goss?
No.
Well, that was fun.
That was fun. The next item's going to be funner.
Did we not set a meeting?
We will. Yeah. That doesn't require, people at home probably can't hear him. He asked if we set a meeting date, and no, that doesn't require a motion by council. But there absolutely will be at least one meeting. I promise you that, Jesse. It would have been nice if we had drawings to present at that meeting, but, you know, it's whatever.
You can draw something up.
Get out my crayon.
I saw some drawings at that last meeting that wowed my socks off.
That somebody paid for, I bet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I saw it. I can see the vision.
Please call the next item.
Please.
Item 9E, update on 3405 East Fourth Avenue, consider structure to be unsafe and dangerous.
Good evening again, city council. Jason Leidy, building official. So this is an update on 3405 East Fourth Avenue. Consider structure to be unsafe and dangerous. This is a continuation of the February 18th, 2025 meeting, where we continued to hold a public hearing to condemn or order repair of the structure at 3405 East Fourth Avenue. The outcome of the previous meeting, council meeting, was 5:00 to provide Mr. Razor 30 days to provide further plans and documentation to bring the structure into compliance with city code and to complete the payment of the property taxes owed by Mr. DeVaney, DBA Hutch Building LLC in the past due amount of $22,893.06. I can say that I've spoken with Mr. Razor and he'd be able to provide a little bit more information on the status of the building of where we are with the property ownership. But Mr. Razor did notify me today that he did pay up to the 2023 taxes. We stole the 2023 taxes. We stole the two thousand and twenty-four taxes, correct?
Twenty-seven dollars paid.
Okay. And then to date... Sorry, let me backtrack a little bit. Since that last city council meeting also was conducted on February eighteenth, Mr. Razor has completed the shoring and demo of the collapsed portion of the structure. The demo permit is still active at this time. That's just because Mr. Razor is requesting an extension on a little work that's going on on the inside. Plus, part of that demo is going to overlap into refacing that south portion of the building once he submits a plan for that. And then as discussed during the last council, the Office of the State Fire Marshal recently conducted facility inspections on the property. Inspection resulted in a list of violations that required Mr. Razor's response with a plan of correction. On twenty-seven March twenty-five, I spoke with Mr. Razor and he had stated at that time that he hadn't provided comments back to the city council along with the code footprint for their review. And he had till April fourth to make any further comments. Mr. Razor, at that time, him and I did discuss a extension on the demolition permits. We have not granted that extension yet, but that's something that's in the process. But I did guarantee the extension on, as we had our discussion, because it's just going to be part of the remediation and part of the construction process if this moves forward. We also discussed, or he stated that engineering consultants were currently working on plans for the submittal and still needed another thirty days for the submittal of those engineering plans. And he also stated for the, that the transaction of the ownership was believed to be finalized by this meeting today. On twenty-seven March, two thousand and twenty-five, I also spoke with the Office of the State Fire Marshal. Their office was performing an expedited plan review and providing comments back to Mr. Razor and the development staff. I believe Sarah Syke had submitted those over to the Office of the State Fire Marshal, but there were still some things that were needed on the code footprint for the State Fire Marshal Office to approve of those. So they should have provided some comment back to Mr. Razor and/or Ms. Syke. Mr. Razor's case with the Office of the State Fire Marshal will play out on a separate tract that's totally separate from the city's condemnation case. I just wanted to make those updates on where we're at with the Office of the State Fire Marshal. I want to remind council that this building still has no certificate of occupancy or legal occupancy to occupy the structure. There are still some things ongoing in the building which we need to finish clearing out materials. And I think we need to put that on a faster track and timeline. And then it is considered an unsafe and dangerous structure and has been designated so by the city and ordered to vacate. So we need to work with the process on a better timeline for that to happen. The structure is still considered an unsafe and dangerous structure as defined by the City of Hutchinson Code and still follow, requires the following to rectify it, these substandard conditions. Number one is a structural report and plans provided by an engineer, architectural plans to rectify the substandard code violations, fire protection and fire alarm system, complete repairs and bring the structure into compliance, and then finally obtain the certificate of occupancy to legally occupy the building. In its current condition, the structure is unsafe and dangerous for public occupancy and does not meet the minimum code standards of the city's adopted property maintenance code or the building code or fire code. Due to the condition of the structure as described above that renders the structure as an unsafe and dangerous structure, a resolution is presented which condemns the unsafe and dangerous structure within the City of Hutchinson located at 3405 East Fourth Avenue and allows the property owner thirty days to repair or demolish and clear the condemned structure. Staff's recommendation, we believe that this is beyond feasible repair and is unsafe and poses a danger to the surrounding neighborhood and should be condemned as an unsafe and dangerous structure. Staff also recommends the owner be allowed thirty days to repair or demolish and remove the condemned structure and all construction debris. And we also recommend an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar cash bond. So the recommendation and by staff would be, and the action requested would be to adopt the resolution which condemns an unsafe and dangerous structure at 3405 East Fourth Avenue. I'm going to read through these real quick as I'm just getting these at the same time that you all would be getting these. This is a letter from Landmark Architects. Says, "Based on our ongoing work and discussions of your intent continuing use of the building at 3405 East Fourth Avenue and desire to comply with the city codes and regulations, Landmark Architects proposes to complete the following: A final code footprint and occupancy and egress identified, applicable codes listed, relevant building analysis and exit egress lighting complete and stamped for city review accordingly approximately thirty days from this letter." And this letter is dated April first, two thousand and twenty-five. And that is from Landmark Architects, Sarah Syke. That's a letter from Engineering Consultants, which says, "As you and I have discussed on Friday, we are looking at mid-April to have some concept drawings pulled together to review and go over. Then we will have stamped drawings to you by mid-May. The stamped drawings will be for all three walls of the demoed area." And I'll stand for any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Since our last meeting, Engineering Consultants has been to the site again, as well as started review of the location. They have drawings that we have that are in possession of, as well as any CAD files that Landmark had. And they've started that process of designing or redesigning the rehab for the demoed area. Landmark has continued their work on code compliance, as well as some restrooms with Jason Lady, other items needed for that compliance and submittal to the city as well. The property tax through twenty-three was paid. And as of tomorrow, I should have the final signed agreement on the purchase of the building. We have also been working with Fire Marshal's Office on compliance on our existing protective wire system, our temporary egress plan, fire extinguishers, and then the cleanup of the electrical from, that was damaged during the grain. All that previous electrical was completely de-energized when the electricity was split from the heat in the building, but it is still in the building. So that's all in process. At this time, we'd like sixty days to complete the required engineering, architectural, submittal to the city staff, viewing that there probably will be two different submittals. One on code compliance, or sorry, one of code footprint. That code footprint is being submitted both to the Fire Marshal's Office as well as to the city office. And then the second one will be for the submittal of the engineer drawings from Engineering Consultants as well.
Well, Dan, I, I guess we've had several phone conversations and text messages. I do appreciate your, the information you provided as we've gone along this because it makes, for me to give an extension for another sixty days, easy because you're making progress. It's not like you're, I mean, you've paid the property taxes, which we were kind of upset about last time that you weren't taking care of that, which really didn't, fell back to the original property owner. And so with everything you've made progress-wise, I really feel like we should go ahead and give another sixty-day extension so you can complete more work. And as long as you keep making progress, I'm fine with continuing on down this road. Because I'd rather you see, you know, turn this project around than we have to demo it and cost taxpayers more dollars, so, thank you.
Dan, you're serious about getting ownership of the building?
I wouldn't pay the property taxes today or the other things.
And I know.
I mean, I had a very serious...
I feel like that's the most important thing here.
Pat had some other things that kept him from getting this final signed document to me today, unfortunately, but he promised I'd have it tomorrow morning.
All right, thank you, Dan.
I guess I, I don't understand, I feel like, and maybe Jason, you could speak to this. I feel like Sarah's, is Sarah's letter still in contradiction to what you are proposing or asking to be completed? Or is she saying, yes, the plan is to comply with all of this? We just need about thirty days of time?
Yeah, I think her statement is just saying that they intend to comply with everything and that she just needs another thirty days. Because this is also, I imagine, there's also some comments that are working back through the State Fire Marshal's Office because I know they made some comments back to Landmark and to Mr. Razor.
Okay.
So I think the intention is to comply with the code standards.
Okay, thank you.
And there are some other things that Mr. Razor's working through as well as far as the easement agreement. There's an easement agreement out there that depended on what KMS has with the easement agreement of whether there's that separation between the two buildings as well. So there's some other things that he has to work through. He did send me those easement agreements that the county had on file. And I did not find in it exactly what I was looking for. We've had that discussion and he is reaching out to both KMS and the county and doing some further work to work on those easement agreements. And the potential's out there to redo those easement agreements at the same time if they need to be, if he can come to a different agreement with KMS.
I've talked to Graber since, looking at the county documents, and it is in the easement agreement. But it's an industrial site that has easements all over the place. And looking at that, there is some things that need to be cleaned up anyways and probably clarify this joint access. But it is in there according to the plat.
Do those edits go to planning and zoning?
I wouldn't think so. I mean, they would have been... They were originally drafted in two thousand and seven. I wouldn't think that they'd go to planning commission.
So you don't need to edit the agreement, you just need to...
I think there's some things that actually probably just need to be deleted off the easement because they no longer are applicable. But also potentially some wording, like as Jason said, it's hard to... When I read the agreement that was filed up the county and I knew what I was looking for, but I'm not a title person by any means, it was confusing. I had to go to Graber who did some of that work and then also just redid it as far as KSM when they did their purchase. And it is marked on their documents that joint easement is there.
Any additional questions for Mr. Razor or Mr. Lady from council? Is there anyone in the audience who wants to speak on this item?
So do I need to make a motion to extend this for sixty days then? Or do we just table it for sixty days again? So I make a motion?
Motion, whatever you would like.
All right, I make a motion to extend the work in progress at 3405 East Fourth Avenue?
Do we need to set a next hearing date, Paul?
We'll pick the nearest one to sixty days.
Sorry, I should look that up, huh?
No, they'll pick it. Because they have to do the publication. This requires a second.
I don't think this is a hearing, is it?
He just said he wants to table it for sixty days. So they'll... You still have to publish...
I didn't think we did a motion last time, I thought we just tabled it. Can't remember the sort of...
All right, you want to continue it for sixty days?
Correct.
Does that require a second?
Yes.
Second.
Richardson?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Fast?
Yes.
Magers?
Yes.
Goss?
Yes.
Item number nine F, NJCAA Financial Support Request.
I'm not sure if they're going to hang up video or not, so I'm going to get prepped for it.
I'm going to propose we take a five-minute recess while he gets the Zoom set up.
I mean, it's basically ready.
Are they on?
Yeah, they're here waiting. I'm just waiting if they're going to turn their video on or not.
Are you going to put them on the screens? Okay. Never mind.
No, you're good.
I was with you on that break.
Should we? People quit eating all the cookies.
Are you guys able to hear them?
Yes, great evening.
Yeah.
Did you call the item, Mary?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry. I'm sorry, sir, I can't read your names on the screen. So if you guys have any information or presentation you'd like to give us about this item, please go ahead.
Great evening. City Council, Mayor Goss, and all attendees. I am Andrew Givens, Assistant Vice President of Marketing and Media and Development for the NJCAA. And also on the call is Dr. Christopher Parker, President and CEO of the NJCAA. And we'd like to thank you for this opportunity to meet with you all tonight. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for your support of the 2025 NJCAA Division One Men's Basketball Tournament that was held last week in Hutch. It was tremendous success and thank you all for your support and your participation. Dr. Parker met with Councilman Enrico last week and discussed an opportunity to receive some support from Hutch City Council. And Dr. Parker, I'll turn it over to you to add any comments that you would like to.
Sure, thank you, Andrew, and thank you to City Council and City Manager Enrique, Enrico. As we talked last week, the dynamics of the tournament, Road to Hutch, is something, you know, we've poured into. So I've been in this role for eight years now. And, you know, we've got some great partners in Hutchinson. You know, the City of Hutch from Leanne, Deborah, Holly, of course, the American Legion that works with us for the actual operation of the tournament. But for the last couple of years, college athletics has really evolved drastically. And so we've taken what was a very old model of doing the same thing over and over again... and over again and used it to raise the bar. So again, now we're on ESPN nationally televised game. The tournament itself is on ESPN Plus during the week. If you came to the tournament, you'll see all the additional branding that's being done. So we've poured into resources over and over again. For the last two years, we've invested over a new $60,000 a year in investment into the tournament from our, from our side of the house. This is the only tournament that this model exists and how it exists. So as we look at it, you know, things have very much shifted. Our agreement is not with the city of Hutchinson. It is with the American Legion. I discussed that with City Manager last week and these, and these complex types of dynamics. However, you know, we have great partnerships and great relationships. So our request is for an annual contribution of $20,000 for the, all of that money to be used exactly what we've done, from logo design to hospitality. This was the only tournament in the country that we had out of 57 championships that did not have a hospitality area for coaches, you know, individuals that were coming in as part of four-year coaches and stuff until three years ago. Again, the Visit Hutch has been a great partner in making sure that they, they literally sit there and help us manage that since we've added that. The branding, the TV, so the TV alone, ESPN Plus, cost us upwards of $20,000 in itself just to put out there. So as we look at that and continue to make an investment, we simply wanted to request a $20,000 a year to go back to try to offset the $60,000 and plus growing that we've done the last couple of years for this tournament as we go. The contract with the American Legion is still in place for another 20-some years, close to 30 years. But we've had to get creative. We've had to figure out ways to sustain this long-term financially. As I explained to the City Manager, yes, I get offers for this tournament all over the country now that it's nationally televised and gets the notoriety that it deserves. And that heritage and that history is Hutch. I'll be the first to tell you. We promote Road to Hutch for our men's basketball. You know, we, you know, candidly, we discussed how can we make Hutch the Division One Women's Volleyball home, you know, moving forward. Our coaches love it. It'll be there next year, and then it rotates for a couple of years. But how do we do some of the similar things with Hutch for women's volleyball, but not wear out the Visit, you know, Hutchinson folks that have worked so hard in that dynamic? Because the model is different. There are two very distinct different models that goes on. In one given year, the city of Hutch could host three different NJCAA events, and all three are built on different models with different entities. One being Hutchinson Community College, one being Visit Hutch, and one being the American Legion. So putting that together, our request is simply to ask the city of Hutch to provide $20,000 a year. It goes back in. 100% of the money is spent in Hutchinson. All the logos, decals, and that kind of stuff, we outsource directly to local vendors to install. So again, we want to keep the money there. We just need some help to continue to raise the bar to what it can, what it should be, what it'll continue to be. And we're going to keep investing wherever we can. So we're just asking for a little help on an annual basis to make this a reality as we move forward. So thank you to City Manager Enrico and the City Council for hearing our request.
Any questions from council? Would anybody in the audience like to speak? When I was presented with this as an option to add it to the agenda, I had a lot of questions. This was actually going to be added onto the consent agenda, and then I had a bunch of questions. And so we moved it to its own item to allow for presentation. So really, my concern is a couple of things. It feels like we haven't been presented with the financial impacts, the tourism impacts of the tournament in probably quite a while. So I am curious what this means. Also, projections for what keeping the tournament in town looks like. Because in your letter, in, in the memo, Mr. Vegas, it is vague, and it's probably just because we don't, we as a city don't have these numbers. I believe that the chamber has these numbers in regards to lodging, sales tax, fuel tax, et cetera. Do you guys have any information that you could present to us?
There's nothing that I can present to you that, that shows the total income spent at restaurants, hotels. I can tell you that I presented to City Council four times in the last five years on the new hotel. And as you all know, you can't control, you can't control that. But the goal was to have that up and operational for this tournament. That unfortunately wasn't the happening. So we still had to move teams to McPherson and to Wichita to have that in place. So I can't officially give you any, any numbers on tax revenue from restaurants, from hotels, gas, anything like that. My speculation is the only thing that I can provide that behind the fair, this is probably one of the top most economic-impacted weeks in the city of Hutchinson for a mass event, is my, again, that's speculation on what it is. And we're not asking, you know, we're not asking City Council to look at this in, in that way. We want to make the impact. We're talking, we're going to talk in April, April 13th week, whether 32 teams should be in the NJCAA tournament. We don't know what the basketball committee is going to say, but that's going to continue to grow and impact, obviously, revenues. And of course, in this model, expenses that everybody undergoes on our end. So I cannot give you any figures. I would have to lean on people in Hutchinson to provide those figures.
How many teams currently play in the tournament? 16?
24.
24. So if you grew to 32, would they all play in one location, i.e. Hutch?
Yes. The, the, the tournament would stay in Hutch with all the teams competing in Hutch.
So you would add days to the tournament?
We would probably have to add two days is what the, again, the, the basketball committee, we, our committees are made up of individuals across the country. I know they're split on whether they want to add another eight teams or whether they want to stay at 24 for the, you know, for the foreseeable future. I know that's split, but it's being discussed in April. But yes, it would be an additional two days added on to the tournament as it is. This past year, this year, we added another day to the tournament from the old model. So we added a day of rest. So we keep four teams in Hutch this year for a day of rest where before they were out, they were out a day earlier. So we've already made an additional day of existence for the tournament this year. Of course, our model, the schools are paying for their own hotel rooms and travel and transportation.
Thank you, Dr. Parker.
You're welcome.
I'm LeAnn Cox with Visit Hutch. Unfortunately, I cannot share an economic impact number with you because we've never been able to get that data from both the Legion. This is their event. This is not our event, like Dr. Parker said. So there's a lot of expenses and revenues on the back end of their agreement that prior to the last few years, they've never been comfortable sharing. And to get a true economic impact report generated through the state's calculator, there's a lot of information you've got to put in there. And we've never wanted to do that half-heartedly. We, if we're going to generate a report, we want it to be 100% accurate. We are talking about, with the new leadership with American Legion right now, as well as NJCAA, trying to put a report together, doing one for 2024. And then in a few months, when all the numbers come in for the 2025, we would hopefully be able to do a report on, on this year's event. I can share with you tonight that after doing some, some quick math, the total number of room nights generated from this year's event was 1,262. Now, the bad news for us is all 1,262 were not here in Hutch. Of the 1,262, we had 787 room nights generated. And the caveat is, that's just the teams. That doesn't take into account the fans, the cheer squad, the bands, because they're on their own, and there's really not a way to account for those. So just the teams, 787 room nights. If you take the average daily rate of our hotels here in Hutchinson, that's about $129. That gets you to well over $100,000 just in room revenue generated from the teams. So on top of that, they're going out to eat. They're out in the community, interacting with the kids, with, with, you know, various activities. One of the teams from New York held a basketball clinic at the YMCA on the day before the championship started. It was wonderful. Lots of kids there, and they loved that. So specific dollars, that's the only ones I can report to you with, with accuracy.
Bed tax, is that 12%?
I wish. No. It's 7% total. Of that, 4% is what funds our program. So that gets us about $5,000 roughly. Now, this will all look better next year because, you know, the hotel will be open. And there's nine teams currently that we have to place in Wichita and McPherson. So we still don't have a confirmation from the hotel ownership yet. But best-case scenario, if they give us every one of their two-bedroom rooms, that's 68, I can make it work that we would get seven of the nine teams back into Hutchinson. So then at that point, starting next year, there'd only be two out of town, spending their money elsewhere.
Mr. Parker?
And I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Yeah, I was going to, I was going to ask you. You had on, you had on your letter, Mr. Parker, the, kind of, some of your costs for the ESPN production, hospitality, your annual investments, like $67,000. Do you get like, so I know you guys created those hospitality areas a couple of years ago. Are you guys getting sponsorships? And do people have to pay to get into those hospitality things? Or I was just kind of trying to understand the, the, the ask for the money, I guess. I appreciate what you guys have brought to town and keep continuing to bring here. And so I'm just, just a question for me. It's on giving, giving away this money, so.
So it's, it's twofold. The hospitality, the coaches, the, the basketball coaches of four-year colleges are, can bypass us. They bypass us as part of their tickets. So they're, they pay for a ticket that gives them access to there. Our two-year colleges' participant coaches, they get in for free, and then we open that up to anybody who sponsors. And I think the, the critical thing to understand there is the sponsors go through the American Legion for the most part, with a couple of our big sponsors, meaning Credit Union One, Zurich. I don't, Zurich had two people come. I don't, Credit Union One, I don't think they ended up having the one person come. They're, they're given access to that. And then we try to recruit somebody who may want to be a sponsor of those things. So we group all the assets together. And what I mean by assets, the video boards, the rolling screens, hospitality, anything we can, we put them together in packages to make it look appealing for people to have a special thing. So this is only the second year of that sideline hospitality. The feedback has been wonderful, especially from four-year coaches as it, as it goes forward.
Okay.
So the answer is yes, yes and no. It's, it's kind of yes and no.
So on this, so if we did, on this $20,000 contribution, I know that the, the Legion and, and you guys split 80/20. Would that be the same thing on this, on this pot of money? You guys would split it 80/20 on that part as well? Or, or no?
We, this is, since, since this is just a request to the city, we would basically put 100% of this money back into the expenses.
Okay.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a split, because the split is only for revenues. It would be a direct, we would put this directly into the budget to cover the expenses towards Hutch.
Okay.
Revenues are split 80/20?
Mm-hmm.
Did our letter say that?
No, I don't. So I don't think it's 80/20, actually. It used to, it used to be a whole different equation until last year, and that's the, the renegotiated thing. And it has, it has a lot of quirks of what that applies to.
So is that, is that not a correct statement then, an 80/20 split?
Andrew, what is it, what is exactly how that's written now?
It is, it is 80/20 after expenses.
After expenses, okay. Right. You're correct, Councilman.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any of City Council? Again, happy to answer. Between Andrew and I, hopefully we can answer anything.
How does the, so the Legion handles the tournament. How's the facility handled in regards to rent or cost?
The, the contract for the facility is directly from the American Legion to the city. We have no, we have no agreement with the city of Hutchinson for the facility.
Okay. So the Legion handles it, and you work through the Legion solely through them?
Correct.
Paul Brown is saying we do not charge for the facility.
Okay.
Well, Mary, you need a motion?
Yep.
I have no problems. I, this is, we put $20,000. It goes back into the city. We get it back through taxes, through the hotels and stuff. It's a no-brainer for me. I make a motion that we approve the request of $20,000 to support the NJCAA.
Can I ask one more question here? Is, is there any Hutchinson branding that goes on during the marketing in regards to helping with some of these additional, I mean, some of these additional costs for additional marketing? Is there any City of Hutchinson branding that goes along with that?
Absolutely. So if you walk in, you'll see the first big sign is Welcome to Hutch.
I understand. But I mean, like ESPN and all the other promotional stuff.
It's part of the logo. It's part of the tournament logo. It says Hutchinson, Kansas underneath the like NJCAA D1. I could probably pull it up and show you. But I remember seeing it on the, on the website, which was also like on the ESPN stuff.
Yeah, so we, we do. Go ahead, Andrew. In as, in all aspects of marketing, promotions, digital, as well as onsite, we do, we do include Hutch, Hutchinson, Kansas. You know, we, we include that on all aspects.
I just wanted to make sure it was included in some of these additional promotional items that are adding to the expenses of the tournament.
Yeah, the, the one thing that's kind of cool, and our coaches and student athletes greatly appreciate it, is just in the last few years, we've started using the hashtag with our stuff, Road to Hutch. So now Hutch is quote-unquote the destination. But when, like, when we start releasing our first poll for basketball, beginning of the season, you know, it basically, the Road to Hutch starts now. The Road to, the Road to Hutch does this. So we continue to push that out with everything we go, with the culmination event literally being the Men's D1 Basketball National Championship. If, if any of you got to see the game, hopefully you were there. But if any of you got to see the recording or the ESPN live show of the But if any of you got to see the recording or the ESPN live show of the, of the game, or you can go back and watch it, the first thing you see is drone footage of, you know, the City of Hutchinson, the Hutchinson Sports Arena. They talk all about Hutchinson. You know, those things just didn't exist until the last two years. So that exposure, again, I can't tell you, I, I can't sit here and tell you as City Council or, or members of, of the audience, how much that's worth. Only you can determine for yourself, like it's being on national TV and opening up your screen and the first thing you see is a, a live drone footage of the City of Hutch and their announcers, P announcers talking about why Hutch is what it is and how it's the basketball culmination event for junior college basketball. So yeah, all of that's kind of a piece of the puzzle. Some of that has grown organically. Some of that has grown from what we've done.
Okay.
And I'll say one of the highlights for this year's tournament was on ESPN, the top play of the day on ESPN SportsCenter was the last second shot made by Connor State. And the reporters all talked about live from Hutch, that type of thing. So it was a great exposure. One of the top stories in sports.
I kinda, I kinda look at the ask.
March Madness in the infield.
I kinda look at the ask as being almost like additional sponsorship for marketing for the City of Hutchinson. I mean, it's splitting hairs a little bit. Not that I have any or you have any, sir. But it's, it's kinda like, that's kinda how I look at it, is we're, we're helping offset some marketing costs for extra exposure for the City of Hutchinson.
That's very fair. Because that's, that's exactly what it's going to. It's, all the money has been going to the, going to the ESPN production and the, the, all the additional marketing that we've done.
I will second Mr. Garza's motion.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Magers.
Yes.
Goss.
No.
Item 10, report of City officials.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Garza, you are first.
I think I've talked enough this evening. I think it's time for me to go to bed. Thank you.
Richardson.
The only thing I would note is I know we have a lot of road construction going on. Some of the detours are, are, there were surprises in regards to some of the detours we've had. I know there's been some people that have voiced opinions in regards to delaying some projects. I, I would say that just considering especially Woody C., a delay would cost not only an extra, let's say we delayed it a month on the front side, it would cost us that month on the front side. But it also delayed even longer because it would finish in the wintertime and take a lot longer. So you'd look at it more like a three-month delay rather than a one-month delay with a lot of extra costs. So as inconvenient as it is, it's better fiscally and timeline to just kinda work around it as best we can for a month or two. And then the other thing I would remind people is the detours that are set are mostly for commercial truck traffic, those that live in the area and are, are in smaller vehicles, commuter vehicles, can't find other detours. We just don't want heavy trucks going down some of those side streets because they're not designed for it. That's why some of the detours seem longer than, than necessary is because it's really for, for truck traffic. And that's all I'd like to add tonight.
Ain't nobody taking those detours. Mr. Fast.
Along those lines, I did take a drive up to South Main. The concrete's been poured. I'm assuming it's gonna be open in a week. I've heard two weeks, two weeks, two weeks, two weeks. And, but I think we're getting closer. So if staff could find out when that is and, and put that out to the public. Is, is, oh, he's back there. Thank you.
I actually had an update from that. Talked to Kansas Gas. We're actually planning on opening Main Street tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
There will be some, still some work on E and some of the sides. But Main Street itself should be open tomorrow morning.
Thank you. And my other comment was thank you to staff. I know that staff has been working very hard lately on all kinds of things. So thank you. It doesn't go unnoticed with me. So.
Mr. Magers.
So I was not at the last council meeting and I brought up two issues at the previous meeting. And they both, I watched the videos and I wanted to thank Chief Burley for addressing the, the noise ordinance. So I get some more information on that. And I'd also like to thank Angela for addressing the water bill system in her report. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I must admit that I'm pretty frustrated with not spending the money to fund a concept of Memorial Hall. I think $9,000 was a generous opportunity to split the cost from Hutch Rec would really go a long way in helping me make a decision and asking the public to make a decision on the project. Because at this point, we won't have a true concept to take when we go to this public meeting or multiple meetings that we plan to hold. And I know that holding those meetings is going to be important to you guys. But yet, we just spent $1.3 million on a plan, the water plan. That is a plan that is not guaranteed work. If anything, that uncovers lots more work for us to, to do and to fund. But we weren't willing to spend $9,000, which I really see as a tool that would help us in our decision-making. So that, that's how I feel about that. I don't know that in the future, we will have that offer from Hutch Rec. So we would have the option of funding it completely unless another community partner comes forward. When we were in budget talks two years ago and the community college and the school district offered to fund the turf in part, we jumped on that and we spent $1 million for turf. So $9,000 just seems like a drop in the bucket. So anyway, that's my report. And I had something else, but I don't remember what it was. Mr. Vegas, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Are we having an executive session?
We can.
Can we take a five-minute break and then have a 10-minute executive session?
Yes.
To meet back here at 9:37?
Five minutes, 15 minutes?
Five minutes and then, oh, no, I didn't do that math right.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Richardson.
Yes.
Garza.
Yes.
Fast.
Yes.
Mengers.
Yes.
Goss.
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.